Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:36. I would like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you and we give you the praise and the glory. We thank you for your love and for your kindness and your goodness and your mercies. We are you tonight and we ask that you would grace us with your presence in this meeting. We ask that you would lead in God us into all truth and that you, that your peace would abide in this place. And Father God, we just grate, we are so gracious that you keep us safe. We thank you for keeping us safe, our families, the citizens of Glen Arden, the employees of Glen Arden, and all who is affiliated with us. Father God, we ask that you will bless and save this nation in Jesus' name I pray. Amen and amen.
Madam Clerk, should you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening. Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Present.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Here.
Councilwoman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed is here.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Prior to the meeting, we made some adjustments. Could you announce that to the citizens?
Yes. So, a few adjustments to the agenda. We are going to move, remove, or table Resolution 41, Resolution forty, Resolution 41, Resolution 45, and we're going to move Resolution, Ordinance 8 to a topic of discussion to combine with city parking. Also, we're going to, I propose that we add the swearing-in of any members who, who are voted for the election board after the legislation. Oh, I'm sorry. And we're also removing 51.
Table?
Table 51, yes. Can I see a pen real quick? No, I'm out. All right. So, 41, 45, and 51. All right, are there, is there any other discussion? Mr. Gray, could you mute your, the R, RG? Thank you. All right, is there any, any other discussion on the amended agenda? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. The amended agenda is hereby adopted. Okay. First up is the adoption of the February minutes from the work session on the third, the public hearing on February the 11th, and the regular session on February 18th. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. The work session on February 3rd, public hearing on February 11th, and a regular session on February 18th minutes have been adopted. Next, we will have remarks from Joseph Prudential, liaison from Representative Ivey's office. Mr. Prudential?
Turn the mic up. Yes? Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Council President. My name is Joseph Prudential. I am the Veterans and Military Affairs Liaison to Congressman Glenn Ivey. I am also a field representative for his office, and I bring you greetings from him personally and from his office. Thank you very much for giving me time at your meeting this evening. I will be as brief as possible. I know you have a lot on the agenda. To say that we are in unprecedented times is a serious understatement. Like many of you, Congressman Ivey is deeply concerned by the rash of unchecked executive actions taken by President Trump. These arbitrary decisions do not bring down costs of the, for the American people, they do not keep people safe, and they are costing civil servants jobs, angst, and it makes the government less efficient rather than more. So how can we fight back? Try to remember that there are two other co-equal branches of the government, the judiciary and the legislature. What can we do? Pick up the phone, call your legislator, let them know how you feel, what you want them to do. Write an email message and send it to them. Take out an old pen and piece of paper and write a note and send it to them. We do really have some power over Congress whether we know it or not. You might think it takes tens of thousands of people writing a congressman to affect a decision. I'm here to tell you it takes tens, just a very few. So don't think that if you don't write the letter, if you don't make the phone call, it won't make any difference. It can and will. So if you're on the fence and trying to decide whether to call your congressman or your senator, please pick up the phone and do so. Also know that you have a fighter in Congressman Ivey, and he will continue to press forward during these difficult times on your behalf. Congressman Ivey is a constituent-oriented legislator, so he is fighting on your behalf. If you know of anybody who's been affected by these policies recently, please have them go to our website, and you'll find a place where you can ask for some help. Pick up the phone and call our office. You can ask for help. I won't tell you the website. I have given this information to the, to the clerk of a council, and she will pass it around. I'll also send her digital copies, so it'll be on your website if you choose to do so. But the congressman has had resource fairs and will continue to have them. He's had town council meeting, I'm sorry, council meetings, and will have them again. There's one again tomorrow night at Sootland High School. So he's in the community, giving you opportunities to speak to him and other people who can do things like write resumes, help you find the appropriate place to file a complaint or to get help, and will continue to do so. Some of these he is doing on his own, some he's doing in conjunction with others such as the County Council Chair, Mrs. Ivey. We've talked about some of what I'm going to say before the last time I was here, but I want to repeat a couple of items because they're important. The Community Project Funding Grant Program is a very flexible program where you can request money for a project you have in your community, and the House can then approve them. Understand, though, that we don't have guidance from appropriations yet. We know there's going to be money, we know that people will be approved for these grants. We don't know when, and we don't have all the guidelines. But having said that, we encourage you, if you have a project that money will help the project, please call or write to Congressman, get the application, and submit it. The projects that were approved for last year, 15 projects, have not been, the checks haven't been written yet, but they have been approved. So we know that something's going to happen soon, and we know that the people who request them this year will be getting money. We just can't tell you exactly when yet. So again, I encourage you to make the application, but I can't give you any more guidance than that at the moment. As soon as we have the information, we'll send it out to all the municipalities. Let's talk a little bit about the youth, as I always do. Congressman Ivey would like to remind you that he can make nominations to all, to four of the five service academies. I like talking about this because people don't realize how big a benefit this is. If you are able to get a nomination from the congressman and get into a service academy, that means your education is paid for, everything. Your education, your clothing, your food, your dental health, any other health you have, your vision is all paid for for the full four years. So what does that mean for your child or your grandchild, or maybe even for you, because most of the people here are the ones who are writing the checks for college? That means a $500,000 education in a Class 1 school, internationally-ranked school, where you come out of there with a degree in, most of them are in engineering, but there are tens of, lots of other degrees, about 35 for each school. When you come out, you have no more student debt, you have a guaranteed job. You do have to commit some time when you come out, but you'll be serving time in a leadership role in the finest military on the planet, and when your time is up, if you choose to get out of the service, there will be companies knocking at your door saying, "Come to work for me." So I encourage students, we're focusing on 11th and 12th graders, to make the application to the congressman for his nomination, make the application to the service academy, and he wants to get these academies filled with Maryland 4th District constituents. For those of you who are unfamiliar, I'm talking about West Point, the Naval Academy, the Air Force Academy, and the Merchant Marine Academy. The U.S. Coast Guard Academy does not need nor accept nominations. You're on your own there, but it is similar to all the others except you don't need a congressional nomination. Next, the office is excited to announce that we're currently accepting applications for internships during the summer. You have to be 18, you have to be a high school graduate, but those are pretty much the only requirements. Fill out the application line, get the information from the flyer that the city clerk, I'm sorry, the council clerk has. It's pretty easy to do. The question I always get is, are they paid positions? No, they're not paid positions, but you can't buy the experience you got from working in a congressman's office. These are all at the district office, which is in Landover, Maryland, right across the street from New Carlton Metro. So centrally located and easy to get to. Even if you're not sure what you want to do this summer, I encourage you to apply. Get the interview, get the job. If you decide to do something else, of course, we won't like to see that happen, but we understand, at least you've gotten yourself into the mix. And finally tonight, I want to mention the art competition, congressional art competition. Every congressman accepts art to be judged in his or her office. These go on to the congressional competition and then go on to a national competition. They have to be flat arts, so we're not talking about statues, we're talking about paintings and things like that, lithographs, etchings. Have to be a high school student, but you don't have to submit it through your high school. You can submit directly to the congressman's office. We have seen some exceptional artwork in this district. It is amazing to me what our students can produce, and we'd love to see a lot more coming out of a district. We want the competition to get more stiff rather than less stiff. So encourage your high school student to send something in while they're up there sitting in their room with the headphones on and they're sketching on their pad. Tell them, put one on another piece of paper and send it into the congressman's office. I thank you for your time. It's always a pleasure to be here in Glen Arden, and if you have some questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Prudential. Are there any questions from council? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your coming and making us informed on what we can do to stay involved with everything that's going on and with the nominations for, for the armed services. Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Prudential, thank you so much for that presentation. I do have a question because I note that Congressman Ivey was really successful in getting the grants and different things for nonprofits, you know, he would actually, really was supporting them in our community, and they are a valuable part of getting things done in the community outside of government. Have you heard anything by way of those grants that the traditional nonprofits have been able to get? And I note what you said earlier about the budget and not, you know, some of the community reinvestments being on hold at this time. Thank you for the response.
The ones I was mentioning tonight are specifically called Community Project Grants. There are other grants. Many of them are still being funded. My recommendation is to call the office and ask for Ethan Sweep. He is the grants manager for the office. It's S-W-E-E-P. So he would be the best one to answer specific questions. In general, yes, there are still grants being funded, and there are others that are on hold at the moment, and we don't know what's going to happen, and I can't tell you which is which. So, but Ethan can. Okay? Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Hear none, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
A second. Next up is the legislation on a docket to be voted on tonight. And so, I think I switch things around. Okay. First up is Ordinance 07, an ordinance to amend the FY-25 budget for the purpose of reallocation of expenses in the budget. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the City of Glen Arden is a municipal corporation of the State of Maryland and operating under Article 11E of the Constitution of Maryland and Section 5-202 of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended, and whereas under the Charter, Article 6, General Powers of the Council, Section 602, 5, appropriations, it states that the City Council has the authority to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose within the powers of the Council, and whereas the City Council desires to reallocate funding for retirement benefits, 6230, in the amount of $67,774 from the regular employee, 6110, and employer's social security, 6200, budget lines that have current, that currently have a surplus from July 2024 to December 2024, as indicated in Section 2 below. Whereas under the City of Glen Arden Charter, Article 3, Section 308E states, "An emergency ordinance shall become effective on the date specified in the ordinance, but no ordinance shall become effective until approved by the mayor or passed over his or her veto by the City Council, and whereas the City Council has the ultimate fiduciary responsibility to steward municipal monies and deem the following additional appropriation to the fiscal year 25 city budget to be necessary to allow expenditure of city funds as follows. Section 1, calculations. The savings for the salaries in social security is based on the total budget amount for the fiscal year divided by 2. B, the remainder of the retirement benefits is calculated by dividing the budgeted salaries by 2, then multiply the rate increase 4.5. And C is unused, is the total of the salary and social security savings less retirement amount. Section 2, reallocation of appropriation from regular employee and employer's social security lines to retirement benefits in fiscal year 25, 25 budget appropriations as follows. Department 10 Administration, 6110-10-10-10, regular employee salary, $68,544. There's a surplus of 7, oh, I'm sorry, a surplus from July to December 2024.
Point of order, Mr. President. I'm looking in, what she's reading in this ordinance is exactly the same thing in this ordinance. So why are we going to duplicate this activity?
It was...
Because if it's already in, he, the treasurer appropriated the whole budget to include this, correct? So we shouldn't even have to pass this budget here. She's reading all of this, and we're going to basically double the amount we're putting to these nine items if we approve this one.
So we're not going to double the amount. It was my understanding that one of them was strictly for the, geared to the retirement, and the other one was to include other things that, actually, some of which just got in there. So this one was, this one was first, and then there was, I think, 09 was the second one.
Yes, but this one is actually in this one, correct?
Well, correct.
See, that's what I'm saying. When you're reappropriating a budget, you only need to reappropriate it one time. We're doing two reappropriations because basically he's moving his money back and forth, and everything he's, she's reading in here is actually in here. So why would we have to...
Not 7, 7's not all.
Yeah, it is. Everything's in, it's in this one. If she go along, I'm looking at each department, and it's the same number with, with the savings in there that we're talking about. So it's included, it has to be in this, it has to be in this budget because we need a bottom-line figure of what we actually are proving. So if we're going to approve this budget, we're also going to approve this amendment, we're going to basically put the money in there twice with approval of both of them.
9?
No.
Did you keep talking about 79?
Yes.
Okay.
So, for the Ordinance 09, Ordinance 09 is looking at the full adjustment to the budget, to the budget for 2025. It's not saying that 07 is going to be added to 09. It is just the full, showing you a full picture of what our adjustments will be.
It doesn't have to say it. Once you do it, it becomes part of the budget. Once you pass this separately, it becomes part of this amended budget also. So you amended the budget twice. You're going to amend it and do this, then you amend it again and add this. So that's why you only need this, because it's already here. I'm not understanding why we need the both of them if the numbers are exactly the same. These numbers are in this budget, correct?
And, yes, and one of the things that caused that to happen is the first 07 was done like two weeks and went in for reading and everything before 09 was done. 09 was done after that.
If it only had a single reading, which these need to be actually labeled for first and second reading, just to make sure. If it had a first reading, and you choose not to do the second reading, you don't have to do the second reading, it won't go, it won't go into effect. You don't have to do it. But those numbers are actually in this budget, and you don't have to state this twice. She's reading all of this, and she's going to read these numbers again in here.
Yeah, so, so I talked to Mr. Stewart about that, and, and so this is what I had sponsored, again, two weeks before 09. And the reason why I asked him to keep it in there is because I do respect other council members' right to not vote on 9 based on different things that are in there. So I wanted what I originally proposed to stand alone, just in case any other council member had any issue with 09. Because if we put down 7 and then we go to 09, but council members choose not to vote for 9 because they disagree with some of the things in there, then we won't have anything for the retirement. So that's, because I, it was first, I just kept it there.
But again, if you pass both of these, you're going to be adding money to the budget. I don't care what you say. You're, you're going to pass this and say, "Put this money into the budget." Then you're going to pass this and say, "Okay, this is what we're going to, we're going to amend this budget with that one." So you got to put these two together because that's basically what you just passed. So you're going to have to add the numbers together. You're going to duplicate the numbers. If you didn't have the numbers in here, I would say, "Okay, go with that one," and then go with this one, but you have the numbers in this budget.
We're not duplicating the numbers. 09 won't duplicate this particular item.
09 will duplicate this.
It won't.
Because it's in here. It's in here.
And I respect any council member's right not to vote for it. And if you...
Hold up, now, hold up, Mr. President. Let me ask this question, okay? You're telling, you're sitting here telling the people, which is really starting to frustrate me, that these numbers in 07 is not in 09, and it is. Mr. Treasurer, is, what's in 07 in 09? And I know it is because I just read it.
So, so point of order, I'm not saying that it's not in 09. That's not what I said. I said that we're not doubling the amount in 09. The numbers are, 9 is comprehensive of everything that's being done. Now, if we recall, 7 came way before 9, and with 9, there have been things added to 9. 7 was a standalone to increase the, or make funding available to increase retirement for our employees. That was there before any talk of 09. 09 came along way after 07, and if council members have an issue with the different things that have been added to 09, then there's, it's their right to argue it or vote it up or vote it down. What I did not want is for the retirement of our staff members to be lumped in with what might be an argument of what should be included on now, what should not be included on now. I did not say that these numbers are not in 09. They're all 9 because they're reflective of the entire budget, but they do not duplicate. So the, let's say, the $67,000 that's in 07 does not, you know, you don't get another $67,000 on top of that, is what I'm saying.
Yes, you do. You do, you do. Because again, the numbers that she's reading in 07 is in 09. I'm looking at the numbers that she's reading, and I'm going to each department, and they're in there. So you're duplicating what's in 07, and if you had left out the numbers in 09, left out 07 and 09, okay, you're right. You go ahead and vote this in, and if this passes, then you would just amend the budget to that, to that level. But when you added them into this budget here, the entire budget, you're duplicating the approval process. So you're going to get 400, $400,000 or whatever the, however the amount is into this because you don't, you're, you're amending the budget twice. You're going to add this, then you're going to add this. These numbers are, these numbers are in the budget. Now, if you were followed through as they're going through them and look at the departments, you'll see that they're identical.
They...
And the treasurer said, they're in, they're in 09, correct?
They are identical.
As I said, it is the complete, it is the com, number, 09 is the complete budget, which even include department where there are no changes. It's a complete look at all budget. That's what it is.
I'm just asking the question is, why? Because when you got them all in one, one budget, this is all you need. We've never, I've never seen us, in my 20 years on this bench and living in the city of Glen Arden, well, you had two budget amendments on the same night.
So it's not, it's not his fault. We did talk about it. I asked him to keep 7.
And that's the problem, because I could have sworn we discussed this last time. I said it ought to be rolled up into one, and I thought that's what was going to be done, but when you do it this way, you're adding, you're doubling, you're doubling the amount of money that you're adding to. You're telling him, "Okay, this is approved, add this to the budget. This is approved, this is the budget that we are proving, we're proving this one, so this is going to be approved with whatever changes are in here." Then you're going to approve this one, which again is going to add money into the budget because that's basically what you're doing, you're adding it in twice. Because again, the numbers are already in here. If you didn't have the numbers in here, it wouldn't be a problem having this one. So if they were going to be separate, then it should have been this one without the numbers in this one, because that way you'll get this one passed, and if there's anything in here that somebody didn't like, then they could have, they could have voted it down and not moved forward. But to protect what you want to do, this is not the way you do it. You got it, you got the numbers in this budget. This budget needs to be modified to reflect what you're, but the changes that you're going to make minus these. That's what you should be doing.
I respect your opinion. We're going to move forward with the vote, and you're welcome to vote it down if you do think that. I can... I, I can attest and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Treasurer Stewart, it does not double the funding amount for the retirement, correct?
The intention is not to double it because it's already there.
Hold on, let, let me. Does nine double the retirement?
Nine will not double the retirement. It is a complete look at the budget as it stands before anything is done.
Okay, now let me say this, since I've been on the council for twenty years and we've done these budgets for, I've been doing these budgets forever. Nine will double the amount because again, if you're saying by law, this is going into effect. So when we pass this and the mayor signs off on it, then you're saying this is what the budget is, bam. Right? Every number in there is going to be law, right? Correct?
Yes.
Let me ask this question.
Yes.
We're going to come, if we're going to vote on this one and we'll pass it and you'll say, this amendment to the budget is now law, correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Put that in the budget. Nope, nope, nope. That's what you got to do. You got to put it in the budget because you just approved this.
That's not true.
And it is exactly the same number.
It's exactly the same number.
So there's no change.
You're going to have to add it on top of what you have here. So you're doubling the numbers. So instead of trying to get two hundred thousand dollars or whatever you're trying to get for this retirement fund, you're going to double their numbers. And once again, that's money that you're going to have to allocate this. And if you do it, I'm going to make sure you put it in the, in the budget so that everybody can see that it's been doubled because you're going to have to. Because you just passed this as a law and said, we want these numbers in the budget also.
So point of information, Mr. Herring, can you please show me in oh nine, in the the actual budget where it's double? If, if you're saying it's double, it, if you could point it out.
You know what, I'm, I'm going to tell you something. As a council member, we should be following through on this to make sure, since that was an issue that I spoke about before.
If you pointed out, if you pointed out. Go ahead, go ahead. I don't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So if, if you have pointed out that a mistake was made, I'm willing to listen and if you could show that, hey, where this is doubled, I'm all ears. Like, no one up here is above a mistake. And so I'm just asking for you to show it because in going through it, 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 I, I do not see where it doubles. So if you could show me where it doubles, I will admit that it doubles and we can throw away seven and just go with nine.
Okay, Public Works, let's go with Public Works, I saw that one first.
Which, uh, now which one are you looking at?
Thirteen.
On, on which ordinance?
On oh nine.
Okay, page thirteen oh nine.
Look at Public Works. Okay.
Okay.
Proposed budget adjustment seventeen seven oh eight fifty, correct?
Seventeen, you looking at the first line?
Yeah, it's her first line.
Seventeen seven oh eight fifty.
Okay, go into what you're proposing to do in oh seven. What are you, what are you amending? The first line. It's on the second page.
First line, second page, hold on. First line, second page, what, I'm, I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
Uh, regular employees. The adjustment that he's making. He's taking it seventeen seven oh eight.
No, which ordinance are you looking at now?
I'm looking at oh, I mean, oh seven, I'm sorry, oh, oh seven, page two, it says, department sixty, Public Works.
Page two, department sixty. Am I just looking a little bit different? The par, I see the department.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, page three, page three, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, page three.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, page three. So seventeen seven oh nine, that's, that's adjustment you're trying to make on that, correct? Mr. Simpson? I mean, Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry. I'll get to him later, but um. So that's what, that's adjustment you're trying to make, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're making that same adjustment in oh nine where you're reducing that amount in oh nine. So you see the seventeen seven oh eight and you're reducing, I don't know why you're, what's called it is all, you're um, and so the total, the total savings of, of total you go, you're putting into retirement is eighty six one six, which is what you have in this budget also.
Yes.
And so you're doing it twice. I mean, and let me see, what other department did I look at?
However, it's not doubled.
It is doubled because you're making, because you're, you're putting, this is, this is, hold up, Mr. Stewart. Because what you're doing is you're putting save, you're accounting for savings in this budget. That's what you're going to say. We're making these adjustments and we're doing these savings. Right? Okay, so you're going to approve that. We're going to approve that. Then you're going to say, basically do it again with this, with this ordinance right here. That's exactly what you're saying to do. You're telling it to do it twice.
So can I interrupt? So, Councilman Herring, I understand what you're saying. I don't think that's what he is doing. But I get, as you have gone through the line item, what you are trying to say, that if seven, if we have seventeen thousand dollars as the, as the ordinance in number seven, then that passes and it increases it to the seventeen. What he's also saying that with ordinance number nine, if we put seventeen thousand dollars in there again, that it'll double it. However, Treasurer Stewart doesn't double it because the, the bottom line is the exact same in, in seven. Hold on, Councilman Herring.
Oh my God.
But I understand what, where you're coming from very passionately. And with that, I am perfectly fine with combining it. And I, I don't, I don't think that it's worth our time to continue to go down this rabbit hole. I, I, and which is why I said, could you show it to me so you can help me understand? Because I understand what you're saying, but I also understand what Mr. Stewart is saying. And so instead of us going back and forth and arguing the same thing and we're just going, nine is going to do exactly what seven is going to do, then let's just remove seven and go through with nine.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. You did that five minutes ago, but all right.
No, no, I don't, I don't reject someone's argument. I just needed you to show me what it is you were talking about so I could understand it. Because I did not understand it with just you saying it. I needed to see it. And also saw Mr. Stewart's point as he was just following through with what I asked him to do and just keeping it separate because it was here long before oh nine. But I, I just think that it would just be a waste of time for us to go back and forth if we're getting to the exact end goal. Councilwoman Gill. I'm sorry, people online. Uh, I'm not online, so I didn't see it, so thank you, Councilwoman Gill.
Yeah, it's nothing bad. I mean, I was able to follow through, but I know others probably were like, what is going on, right? So.
So, okay. All right, so is your issue resolved, Councilman Herring? Thank you. And we're good, Mr. Stewart? That's fine. All right, so with that, then I motioned that we, we're still in discussion, so I motioned that, well, Mr. Herring, do you want a motion that we table?
I moved that we table oh zero oh seven twenty twenty five.
Okay, and now second, any discussion? Uh, and this is going to be tabled permanently since it's just going to be absorbed with oh nine. Okay? Any, any opposition to that? All right, thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Herring. Very passionate. All right, um. Get my pen, make sure we're on schedule, one second. All right, here we go. So seven has been tabled permanently. All right. Next, we will do oh six. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to increase the salary of the City Council of the City of Glanada, Maryland, whereas the current salary for the City Council of the City of Glanada, Maryland is currently seven thousand two hundred dollars and whereas costs have risen significantly due to inflation and whereas there is a need to continue to attract and encourage qualified and interested citizens to serve as elected officials, officials. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Glanada, Maryland, sitting in regular session this seventeenth day of March twenty twenty five, that number one, the annual salary for the City Council of the City of Glanada, applicable after the twenty twenty five city election, is increased to twelve thousand dollars. Number two, this increase shall take, shall take effect with the passage of the twenty twenty six fiscal year budget. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glanada, that this ordinance is and shall become effective twenty days after its adoption or upon passage by the council over the mayor's veto, whichever is later.
Okay, is it motion to bring this to the floor for a vote? Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, um, I have a big problem with this increase. With everything that's going on in, um, you know, uh, with the economy going the way it's going and we just raised salaries for a lot of the employees. I think this is premature. We don't know what's going to happen. If the housing prices go down and assessments go down, then we're going to get hit hard like we did uh last, um, last time the, um, the, uh, uh, housing market fell. Also, I would like to share my screen if I can.
One second. You should be good now.
Okay. So basically what I did was, I went through.
One second, could you?
You need it bigger?
Yeah, make that a little bit bigger, please, so people in the room can see, I have no people online can see. I think, I think that should be good enough.
Okay. So basically what I did was I went and got the salary for these council members in all the, um, twenty six municipalities, I think it's twenty six or twenty seven. Twenty seven municipalities in, um, Prince George's County. And this is, something's missing. Okay, yeah, in your way. So, um, just trying to get, make sure I got everything, everything on here. Okay, so, you know, the average salary is in a state, in Prince George's County is six thousand eight hundred and forty nine dollars. If you look at this, this, uh, spreadsheet here, um, you got some that's making ten thousand dollars. District Heights, their budget is six point seven, uh, million dollars. Laurel, ten thousand dollars. They got a forty three million dollar budget and they pay their council members ten thousand dollars. Hydesville, eleven thousand dollars. They got a twenty seven million dollar budget. Greenbelt, twelve thousand dollars. They got a thirty eight million dollar budget. Bladensburg, twelve thousand five hundred and forty one. They got a twelve, twelve million dollar budget. And, um, Bowie, seventeen thousand, they got an eighty four million dollar budget. Somebody's mentioned Sea Pleasant. When I looked at Sea Pleasant, theirs was seven thousand three hundred. Somebody said fifteen thousand. Even if it was fifteen thousand dollars, they got a fourteen million dollar budget. So for us to sit here with our little seven million dollar budget, and it's not even seven million dollars, that's got opera money in it. When you take the opera money out, it's about five million, maybe six million dollars. Five million dollars, I think, maybe. But the thing is, I don't understand why we need this increase. If you look at the percentage of the budget these salaries make up, most of them are under point one zero percent. Some of the bigger ones, you know, like Comer Manor, they got a smaller budget, so of course they're going to be point two one percent. But the average is point zero nine percent and we're at point one zero percent. So we're really in line with every other municipality in the state, I mean, in the county, when it comes down to salaries. I guess my issue also is this, this position really is a, is a volunteer position. You get a stipend to cover your gas expenses and all of that other stuff. But I'm going to tell you straight up, my, all my years on the council, this council does less movement than any council I've ever sat on. Most of the council members are either on Zoom. Uh, we have two meetings that are Zoom, that can be done on Zoom. When I was on the council, we came up here every day for a meeting. I mean, every meeting was in person up here at this place. We went to PGCMAs, we went to other events. So I'm just trying to figure out what more do we need? Because again, this position is not about the money. This position is about service. You know, I don't see taking the citizens' tax dollars so that we can pay for other incidentals that we really don't need to pay for. You know, my thing is if, you know, you got issues with some expenses or something, maybe you need to not be on the council. Because this is, this is, like, again, this is a volunteer position. When I got on this council, we were making two thousand six hundred dollars and I was fine with that. I didn't, and most of it I gave back. And I say, I give this money back, but I give it back in taxes because it's, because it puts me in a different tax break, um, puts me at a different, different tax level. But, um, again, I don't see the need, especially when I'm looking at these salaries of other municipal governments who have almost three times as much as budget as we do, like Greenbelt. Thirty eight million dollars and they pay their people twelve thousand dollars a year in their budget. So I'm not understanding why we feel that we need to get an increase in, uh, stipend, technically that's what it is, when, you know, again, it's not, it shouldn't be about the money, it's about the service. And that's what we should be here about. Yeah, it's nice to get some money, you know, cover your gas, cover some other incidentals maybe, but, um, that's not what we're here for. I think that, um, seven thousand two hundred is, is, is fine. I think twelve thousand is entirely too high compared to what everybody else is doing and what every other municipality is paying their, uh, council members. Again, twelve thousand dollars, people's paying twelve thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or more have a way bigger budget than we do. Like I said, College Park, twenty four million dollar budget, they pay their people seven thousand dollars. So that's my feeling. I just feel that we, we, we're in line with what the rest of the, rest of the municipalities are doing, uh, percentage wise and income wise. We're a little bit higher than what the average is. The average is six point, I mean, six thousand eight hundred and forty nine. We're paying our council, we're getting paid seven thousand two hundred. I think we're doing good. I think we're doing where we're at. That's my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I don't, I do, a lot of this job is a lot of voluntary, uh, work, but there are other things that go into this job as a council person. It requires a lot of reading, a lot of research, a lot of going to different resources such as going to MML or calling the people at MML to get information to determine how you're going to vote on different legislations or different things that come up within the city. As a council person, I've done this. I go to PGCMA, which is a, uh, conglomerate of all of the municipalities in the Prince George's County area and get information from, and share information or get information from them. Those meetings are held in different places all over the county. The attorney, our attorney, to interact with our attorney. Of course, the city does pay for the attorney, but my time that I spend with the attorney, you know, requires me to spend more time than just coming to meetings. It's more than just coming to meetings. It is the time you put in talking to constituents. I go through my neighborhoods and I talk to my constituents, uh, each and every street if I, if I, if need be. If someone comes up to me in the store or wherever, I stop and take the time to enter, engage with my constituents. This is more than just volunteer. You put a lot of time into this job. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, may I, one, one more comment? Let me say this. I've been on here twenty years and I've been throughout the neighborhood. I've walked the neighborhoods. When it was two thousand six hundred dollars, I didn't care. You know, I helped our people because that's what we're here for. We're here to do service. We're here to be of service to ourselves. And it shouldn't be a monetary requirement or monetary expectation to do, to help people, to be of service to people. If you're helping your neighbors, great, you should be doing that even if you're not on the council. So being on the council is just, uh, gives you a little bit. is just, gives you a little bit more leverage to be able to pass legislation that help and help affect people. But to sit there and say, because you walk and you help somebody, you should get paid for it. I don't think, I know, I know I heard plenty, plenty of prayers up here. I don't think that's what Jesus would require of you to get into heaven. I think that you, we do what we do because you do it out of the kindness of your heart. That's what I feel. Now, you know, I, maybe I'm different and maybe it's a different Bible that I look at, but I'm going to do what I have to do for people. Whenever I can, whenever I can help you, I'm going to help you. And I don't need a dollar, a dollar amount attached to it to give people a hand. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mayor. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we gonna vote?
Yes. And just real quickly, I am the sponsor of this vote. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gillon?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to make, I know that a council member in the past, I don't remember who had mentioned this, but knowing that with the charter changes, there's going to be seven council members and the mayor's role is going to be coming from this council, I'm sorry, it's going to be incorporated into the council, that means that the salary, the current salary of the mayor is going to be basically null and void, right? So is there, I'm trying to look at a way where the money, the salary of the mayor, and again, I don't remember who had said this, so I don't want this to be my idea. I'm just saying that this was an idea that was raised. I don't know if there's an opportunity for the salary of the mayor to be divided amongst the council members, since there's going to be seven council members and no, there's not going to be eight salaries to pay for. If that, eight, there won't be eight stipends to offer. It'll be seven stipends. Does that make sense?
Makes sense. Thank you.
I'm just saying that, just in case, however this vote goes, if that's another consideration. But again, this was not my idea. I don't have my notes in front of me, but somebody else had mentioned it at one point. I just remember that.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, and that's actually one thing I brought up, even though I'm not in favor of any increase. But if we were going to do it, we should take the mayor's salary, split it up. That's $1,200 apiece. That'd bring everybody up to $8,400. Then y'all can go and party on that.
Well, this, the intent of this legislation was not for anyone to party on $8,400.
I'm just saying, I mean, if you want the $1,200, I'd rather take the $1,200 and fix a sidewalk, but if that's what y'all want to do, that's what we could do. But that's what we could, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm amenable to that.
Okay. All right. And this is why, well, one, I'm not married to anything. This was an idea that I proposed and I welcome the council's input. Ideally, it would have come out of the work session. But if we want to adjust it to $8,400, I'm fine with that. Is there any opposition? Eighty, I'm sorry.
Leave it as it is.
Go ahead, Councilman Hairston. Go ahead.
Council-
Vice President Ferguson?
Councilman Harry, what was the dollar figure that you, I remember you mentioning about the absent of a mayor salary?
Right. She's at 8,400. So if you divide that by seven, you get 1,200 apiece. So that, we have 72 now. So that'd take everybody up to 8,400. So that's what I was saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hairston?
I was just gonna say, are we gonna be voting for two different things?
No, it's my, well, I sponsor legislation, so I'm completely open to the ideas of council members. So if, if, you know-
I'm cool with what Councilwoman Gillon had suggested.
So then, is there, is there any opposition to going down to 8,400? Okay. All right. So I am, I can accept that to go to 8,400. So to amend the ordinance to be at 8,400 instead of 12,000? All right. Any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gillon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston?
I just for 84, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Abstain.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Abstain.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes. I lost count. Was that four yeses?
Yeah, we got four yeses.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Four yeses.
Yeah, four yeses.
Okay. All right, thank you. The ordinance passed. All right. With that, we're going to mix something up really quickly because we have our guests here who are going to be a part, well, hopefully, be a part of the election board. So I'll move to that because those members can't stay here long. So we'll go directly through those resolutions. This is for, yeah, we're just going to vote and immediately swear in because we're behind on the other. And so this is for, let me find it. Resolution 47, 48, 49, and 50. We're going to read them together. So we don't have to read them one by one. And then after we vote, those resolutions passes, which pass, we'll go ahead with the swearing in and then we'll get back to the legislation. All right?
Okay.
With that, Madam Clerk, you just need to read one. You put each of their names in there and then read the rest of the resolution and then we can vote from there.
Okay.
Whereas Article 7, Section 701 of the Glen Arden Charter specifies, "There shall be a Board of Elections consisting of ten members who shall be appointed by the council and whereas the City Council appoints as many citizens as are required to ensure a complement of ten members: Cynthia Gray, Richard Arroyo Montgomery, Ricky Arroyo Montgomery, and Karen McGill Butler. Whereas the members of the election board will be required to perform the duties of office and follow the guidelines as outlined under Article 7, Section 703 through 716. And whereas the City Council has given confirmation on March 17, 2025, that now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session the 17th day of March, 2025, that number one, the aforementioned citizens are appointed to the Board of Elections for a term of four years. Number two, this resolution shall take effect immediately following approval by the council."
Okay.
We've been going on all these together, right?
I'm gonna ask for a voice vote anyway, so.
Okay. All right. So we'll go one by one.
Mr. President, can she just read the resolution title and then, and the person's name and that's it, since she's already read everything else?
Yeah. The resolution title in the, in each person. So we'll do that and then vote.
Okay. A resolution to appoint Cynthia Gray to the Glen Arden Election Board.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Council President, Madam Clerk?
We're in the middle of a vote.
I don't see Cynthia Gray's in here in tax.
Okay. We're moving forward. It's here on the agenda. Any discussion? Any opposition? That you said you wanted a voice vote? Could you do a voice vote, please? Voice vote?
You can move as you, you can move as you want. I just want to, each one individual, because you want to do it that way.
Okay. All right. Any opposition to Cynthia Gray? Hear none by unanimous consent. R47 has been adopted. Next is R48.
A resolution to- A resolution to appoint Richard Arroyo Montgomery to the Glen Arden Election Board.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. Richard Arroyo Montgomery is appointed to the election board. Next up is-
A resolution-
R49. Sorry.
A resolution to appoint Ricky Arroyo Montgomery to the Glen Arden Election Board.
Okay. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. R49, that's 2025, is hereby adopted. Next up is R50.
A resolution to appoint Karen McGill Butler to the Glen Arden Election Board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Move by Vice President Ferguson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jones. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hear none by unanimous consent. R50 is hereby adopted. All right. So that was it. Now we'll move on to the swearing in. Mayor, would you like to swear them in? We're swearing in R47, Cynthia Gray, R48, Richard Arroyo Montgomery, R49, Ricky Arroyo Montgomery, and R50, Karen McGill Butler. If the, if Mr. Richard, Mr. Ricky, and Ms. Cynthia can come to the podium, and if Ms. McGill Butler, yes. Thank you. Ms. Butler, could you turn your camera on, please?
Turn on.
Thank you. Have you guys here could stand around the podium so, and Mr. Gray, could you sew the podium? Could the camera be on the podium so that they, it can be recorded? They're swearing in. All right. Mayor Cross?
Thank you so much, Council President, City Council. And first, thank you to all the citizens that have raised their hands to be a part of this Board of Elections for the City of Glen Arden's elections, which will be May 5 of 2025. I regret to inform you, you will not be sworn in tonight. And the reason why is there is an equal opportunity opportunity-
Point of order.
For the City of Glen Arden. January 24-
Point of order.
There were 12 names of citizens who-
Mayor Cross, point of order.
Actually volunteered before you actually were appointed.
Mayor Cross, you have to recognize the point of order.
In accordance to that charter, the mayor has an appointment and the council can confirm. So at this point, regret to inform you, we won't-
Mayor Cross.
We won't be swearing you in tonight. Thank you for your service.
First one, excuse me, citizens, you will be sworn in tonight. I will be swearing you in.
Point of order, Mr. President, before you do that.
Yes.
I wanted to ask the council vice president, were you able to get in touch with Mr. Karpinski about that? I have a very big concern with this because the charter, Section 1201 of the charter says that they must, no one can perform their duties until sworn in before the mayor. And I think we need to be very clear because the attorney did not look at the charter. He did.
Can I?
Go ahead.
We did speak with the attorney. The attorney said that I can swear them in.
No. Hold up, Mr.-
Go ahead.
Did he look at the charter?
The attorney gave permission, credence, because we were very behind on the election and said that I can swear it. Now, if there is a challenge, you guys are welcome to challenge it. Like, I-
Mr. President, I would, I would ask you to be sure, because what was conveyed to me, because again, if they start working on this election and it's found that they could only be sworn in by the mayor, it's, the whole election could be tampered, can be questioned. I would wait a day and get clearance from Mr. Karpinski, because I'm asking the vice president, did you, did he ever get back to you on that section?
He did not return my call.
And did he say he did not see our charter?
He said that he was not looking at the charter when he advised me.
So I'm asking, Mr. President, just to be on the safe side, I'm telling you. Because if they start working on this and then it's found that the mayor should have sworn them in and they started touching balance and stuff, we may have an issue. Even if it's only a day, put out an emergency call to them. You can always do, you can always do a Zoom and swear them in tomorrow.
Okay.
But I would rather, I would rather be on the safe side than to err on the side of caution. I'd rather err on the side of caution than to be, to have them start working on that and to be questioned.
I hear you.
Can I?
I hear you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vice President Ferguson.
Again, Council, Councilman Harry, you being senior on this council, it is written that in 1201 versus our conversation, that the mayor swore them in. I did not look through that, that section and some other section. I didn't see anywhere in our charter, which is the law, that states that the mayor can determine who and who not will be sworn in.
Yeah. So, so I hear you. I don't want you to think that I don't hear you. But in absent of a mayor doing her duty, someone has to step up. Hold on, I'll let you, I'll let you respond. And again, how we got here? Again, the mayor didn't do her duty three years ago, which put us in this situation now.
Point of order.
There is no, you do not have a point of order.
Point of clarity.
So I gave you a warning, Mayor.
Yeah?
And now you've been removed. Chief, can you please remove the mayor, please? Now she won't be swearing anybody tonight.
No, I did not ask for that.
Thank you. So, and let me just finish and then I'll get to you. So here's my resolution. My point is that in going ahead with, with Karpinski, with what he said, that I can swear them in, but telling the individuals to not start work until we've heard us, him, back from him a second time, to alleviate any concerns that Councilman Harry has. And therefore, if I was right and I can swear you in, then you can just go. But if I was wrong, then you will still not do anything and then we'll schedule another meeting. That makes, instead of trying to come up with another meeting tomorrow, we'll just go with this swearing in.
You, you don't need another meeting tomorrow. If you're going to swear them in tomorrow, you can call them up and say, hey, get on Zoom and swear them in.
It has to be public.
No, it doesn't. The mayor has sworn people in over and over again.
Police officers.
Police officers, department heads.
But here's what-
It doesn't have to be in public. It has to be sworn before the mayor. It doesn't have to be in public. I'm just saying, I'm just erring on the side of caution, I'm telling you, because people will challenge.
Chief, she can leave.
This is a man. He's a even getup.
For all those online, please do not open your mics. Thank you.
Mr. President, can we move forward while they're having that conversation? Because we can go here. If you want to swear them in, then swear. I think, I honestly think we need to be careful with this one. And I think, and I'm going to just say this, if Mr. Karpinski does not have our charter in front of us, I would advise us to always let him have that charter in front of us. Because this, I mean, he did the same thing with the, with the, with the commercial vehicle. When he said the 10,000 pounds was legal, we're going to find out it wasn't. It should have been 8,500. That's what I'm saying. You need, the law needs to be in front of him. He needs to see our charter to be sure that he can do that. And I'm just saying, I don't want to see, nothing comes into question when it comes down to this election. Because, you know, something may have not been done in accordance to the charter. And the charter is the law.
And so I am in agreement. I'm just saying that I will meet you in the middle. I do intend to follow what Karpinski recommended and swear them in and actually inform you guys not to start work until we have heard back from him a second time, just to cross all Ts and dot all Is. Is that understood? Do you guys understand that?
Just a question about this.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. Things to do. I understand. Yeah, and just for clarity, we did ask her, and she did not say anything.
Got an email through it.
So, if, if you guys are willing to, if you do, would like to wait, then if you could wait a little bit longer, we'll try to get them on the phone. My intention is still to do the swearing in. Yeah, but we will, we will, we will pause and try to get them on the phone. If you feel more comfortable with that, that's fine. All right. If you, if you, can you do that?
Can we proceed with legislation? Don't we have more legislation than a vote on?
We do.
Okay.
We can, so we'll pause on the swearing in, and we'll go forward with the other legislation. If you can take the meeting now or do you want to call? We are. We are on oh. We are on oh nine. We voted oh six, right? We're going to the, um. All right, so we'll move forward. Let's go forward with oh eight. Oh eight, I'm sorry, oh eight was removed, oh six we passed, then we were going with oh nine.
Whereas the City of Glen Arden is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland and operating under Article eleven E of the Constitution of Maryland and section five dash two oh two of the Annotated Code of Maryland as, as amended, and whereas under the charter, Article eight finance, section eight oh eight D, transfer of appropriations, at any time during the fiscal year, the city manager may transfer part of any unencumbered appropriation balance with, within an expenditure clarification, classification. Whereas under charter, Article six, general powers of the council, section six oh two, five appropriations, it states that the city council has the authority to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose within the powers of the council, and whereas under the City of Glen Arden Charter, Article three, section three oh eight E states, an emergency ordinance shall become effective on the date specified in the ordinance, but no ordinance shall become effective until approved by the mayor or passed over his or her veto by council. And whereas, the city council holds the ultimate fiduciary responsibility for the stewardship of municipal funds, and has determined that the following reappropriations and transfers within the approved budget are necessary to ensure the completion of capital projects approved by the council, as well as to address expenditure trends requiring reallocation in other accounts. Exhibit A is the fiscal year budget reappropriation and transfers of City of Glen Arden Budget Amendment Summary. This exhibit details the reappropriations and transfers within the approved fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget to ensure the completion of capital projects authorized by the city council and to address evolving expenditure trends across various departments. These adjustments do not increase the overall budget, but instead reallocate existing funds to better align financial resources with operational needs. These reappropriations and transfers impact the following budgetary funds, I'm sorry, funds. General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Capital Project Fund, Enterprise Fund, Gold Room. The table attached outlines the specific adjustments made within these funds, including departmental budget increases and decreases necessary for effective financial management. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular section the seventeenth day of March twenty twenty-five, that this emergency ordinance is hereby declared approved. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, that this ordinance is and shall become effective immediately following approval by the mayor or passage by the council over the mayor's veto.
Is, is there a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor for a vote?
Point of order, Mr. President. We need to make a motion to bring it to the floor as an emergency ordinance.
Is this the first? Oh, because we didn't, we read seven first. We didn't read this.
Yeah, we didn't read this one.
Okay, all right.
So I move that we bring this to the floor as an emergency ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It has to be a voice vote, I believe. Madam Clerk?
Council.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Fareed? Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis.
Yes. Okay, now is there a motion to bring this emergency ordinance to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll go second, Councilwoman Jones. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm looking on page twenty-one on the federal employee grant program.
One second, let me pull it up so people online can see it.
And it has two hundred and fifty thousand on that.
What page are you on?
Twenty-one.
Hold on, let me share my screen. And you say it's on page twenty-one? Special revenues?
Okay, that's not the twenty-one I got. Keep on scrolling. It's almost, almost to the back of the.
What's?
It's just a special revenue rebate tax and federal employee. That's it right there.
Yep, okay, got it.
So I would like to actually take that up to the federal employee grant program up to three hundred thousand dollars to include contract workers. Right now, and it's at two fifty.
Oh, I see, I see the line. Any discussion on, I'm sorry, for people online, I'll make it bigger. Not people, people. She can't make it bigger. Where is it? Oh, well. I know for people in here, it's hard to see, but people online can see it clearly.
Isn't that the top?
It's.
If you hit the plus sign.
I can't see the plus sign on here. Oh, there we go.
You have these?
I had something, I had something in the way. All right, there we go. And what we're talking about is this line here.
Yes.
For two hundred and fifty. Any discussion on raising that to two hundred and fifty? Any opposition?
It's already at two fifty.
I'm, I'm sorry, thank you. And raising this to three hundred? All right, any other discussion?
Yes, I do have a discussion on, on, go back to twenty-four, so you can keep on going down. I think it'd probably be twenty-seven on this, on yours.
What's the heading?
I'm sorry. Sorry, twenty-five, Capital Projects.
Yes.
Okay, where is, Mr. Treasurer, where is the sixty thousand for the American Legion on here?
Sorry, the American Legion is in the council section of the, of the amendment.
The what?
The council, the legislative section. It says here, page eleven.
Page eleven on yours?
Yeah.
Page eight on here. Okay, I see, grants athletic clubs. Why does it say grants athletic clubs?
Oh, it's grants in general, which includes.
Can we take that athletic clubs off of there?
So it holds, it holds the grant for the both athletic clubs, and then we're increasing for the, the American Legion.
But instead, they're all grants, correct?
They're all grants, yes.
I'm sorry, say that again, the, so what grant for the club? For the Glen Arden?
We have, for Glen Arden Track Club.
Yes.
There's five thousand, and for Glen Arden Boys and Girl Club, there's five thousand. That's ten. Then we're giving the American Legion the sixty thousand.
So we're not getting rid of the, the funding for the Glen Arden clubs, correct?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, we're increasing. So it's all grants.
Okay, so if we can go back to Capital Projects fund. Where is, I know it said to break out Church Street, Hay Street, and Glen Arden sidewalks. Were those broken out?
No, we didn't break them out, but it is a part of the. It's a part of, remember, we said this was a part of the nine hundred thousand, but we didn't break it out. So it's nine hundred thousand for street paving and three hundred thousand for infrastructure. So in all, we have one point two million dollars for those projects.
I would like to have those broken out, because it's gonna get lost. I saw the contract for nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for sidewalk curbs and gutters, and then I saw, so I want them broken out, because I would like to see them broken out, because I don't want them to get lost. I guess, I guess, you know what? I could, didn't we, didn't we, didn't we speak on that? I could have sworn we spoke on that last time, and I guess, I guess, you know what, maybe y'all should be the council, because I could have sworn we agreed that we wanted that broken out. And it's not broken out.
What I can remember in the meeting is a request to have it sent to you, a breakdown of how these monies would be spent for these projects, so that's what.
Somebody get the video. Council Vice President, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we say break it out?
Councilman Herring did. Eventually, after the discussion, he said that he would like to see it broken out, so that he can see exactly when these things would be done and where the lines were. He did accept.
Because if it doesn't get done this year, Capital Projects roll forward to the following year, and I'd rather not, and not get lost in a nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar contract that we had for sidewalks and other repairs. We need to get that done, because next thing I know, everything will be done, but church, there's kids that still be walking in the street on Church Street. Everything will be done, but they'll still be tripping on Glen Arden Parkway. Now, everything be done, and we'll still be busting axes on Hay Street. So I want, I want it broken out, based on the contracts that we got. I mean, I'm not understanding how difficult it is just to deduct it from whatever, the other numbers. I mean, it's like, you take it out of one and just show it separately. I want funds obligated to those projects, because it seems like anytime I speak of a project over in Ward one, it's not, it's not getting done. Or there's not gonna be any funding done, funding left. So I would like to see it broken out, and I'm not understanding why it's such an issue now to break that out. Can we ask for that?
Mr. President, can we do a resolution specifically for breaking it out?
Mr. President?
One, one second. I'll defer to Vice President Ferguson, because I don't know what you guys are talking about. I had to step out, I had to step out for a phone call with the attorney. I don't, I don't know what you guys, you, you can, you can reside over this issue. I don't know what we're talking about. Your, your microphone, please.
Mr. Stewart, you were saying?
So the city manager has done the breakdown, which includes those errors or those concerns that Mr. Herring has. He could share that information with you.
I thought you said something about a resolution.
Oh, I was saying too, that although we have the funds here in general, it's for paving and for infrastructure, which is sidewalks. So a resolution can be done to cover those specific streets and sidewalks that is requested.
I think we already, we already did a resolution for the.
Vice President Ferguson? Somebody's writing.
Mr. Speaker.
On, somebody's writing on the screen.
Yes, I definitely understand, Mr. Herring, what you're saying. I know the contract, along with the proposals, were provided to you. We'll make the necessary adjustments from the budgetary standpoint, from breaking things out. I think there was a lot of misunderstanding.
Somebody got too much time on their hands.
That is terrible.
Yeah, I, thank you.
No, I said the monies have not been broken out. We can make that necessary adjustment. We did provide the contract with the proposals showing Church Street, the sidewalk work, as well as the other street repairs and movements. So we can certainly follow whatever instructions relative to allocating it and breaking it out specifically within the budget as Mr. Herring requests.
Can I ask a question? And just, Madam President, Madam Vice President, ma'am?
Yes, Councilman Herring.
Why is this so difficult to do? I'm just, I'm just, I really, I really would like to know, because I asked about this a week ago. Well, no, two weeks ago, because we did it at the work session. And I'm just asking, why is this just so difficult to break out those, those projects? I'm not understanding this at all.
Yes, sir, I don't think it's difficult. I think there's a misunderstanding, and I'll make sure it is cleared up.
I just want to, I, I, what I want is, I want it reflected in this document here. So, you know, I would like to see it broken out on this document here. This is gonna be the budget, this is gonna be the approved budget, and I want it voted in this approved budget, because next thing you know, it's gonna be like, there's nothing here for it, or it's gonna get lost in another project, and I prefer that it don't.
Yes, sir.
So we're voting with the minutes?
The lines down, just, you know, right on the budget, just, you know, sidewalk, Glen Arden sidewalk, Church Street, Hay Street, and then how much we're budgeting. That's it. That's all I'm asking to do, just three lines.
Are we good with that?
Yes, sir.
We're not asking.
Yes, it, it will be made. The adjustments will be made.
Okay, so with that, is there any other discussion on ordinance nine? All right, I think we have to. We can move forward with the vote?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Councilwoman Fareed?
I'm sorry, Councilman Hairston is, oh, one second, we're just gonna wait for Councilman Hairston. I don't think we're going to have a... No, you call his name last.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
My vote is yes, and I'd like to just say thank you for considering contractors as well. Thank you.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
I am a yes. And I think Councilman Hairston is on his way.
Yes, okay.
Is a yes. All right, with that, emergency ordinance 09 passes. With that, we'll take a brief, a brief recess for about a couple of minutes, and then we'll come back. Mr. Gray, could you turn the camera to face me as I swear the members in, please? All right, thank you. All right, we are returning from recess, and we have consulted with the attorney, and attorney said that I can actually, I can actually swear them in. So, we're going to move forward to swearing in. So, thank you, Ms. McGill Butler. Let me pull up the document.
All right, citizens of Glen Arden, what you see here?
Point of order.
Point of order, one second, please. Thank you. All right, thank you, citizens, Ms. McGill Butler online, Ms. Cynthia Gray, Mr. Richard Roy Montgomery, and Mr. Ricky Montgomery. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, here I am, McGill Butler.
Do swear and affirm?
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I'll be faithful?
And that I'll be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the constitutional laws thereof?
And support the constitutional laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without, without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of the Board of Elections?
Execute the office of the Board of Elections.
For the city of Glen Arden?
For the city of Glen Arden.
According to the constitution and laws of the state of Maryland.
According to the constitutional laws of the state of Maryland.
Thank you, you are now board members. Thank you, sir, thank you for your service, thank you for your service. All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the remaining legislation. Up next is R. 39-2025 Resolution to Extend a Property Tax Rebate Program. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the city of Glen Arden approved a property rebate for the homeowners in Glen Arden, and whereas the city treasurer reported that about 800 homeowners received the rebate, and whereas there are a little over 1,600 homeowners in the city of Glen Arden, which means a little less than 50% took advantage of the program, and whereas a large majority of the homeowners felt that the program was a scam, because the city administration sent out a letter referencing Capitol Heights, whereas this confusion led property owners not to take advantage of the rebate program. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session the 17th day of March 2025 as follows. Number one, that the city of Glen Arden will extend the property tax rebate program. Number two, letters will be mailed out only to the homeowners who did not apply for the rebate. Number three, the program will end June 30th, 2025. And number four, this resolution will take effect immediately upon passage by the Glen Arden City Council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
Could we put on, on the resolution, on number five, that this will come from, what is this? This special revenue? Special revenue? And whatever that count number is for that? You just did a count number from the treasurer. All right, thank you, that's it.
Number five, you said where, number five?
Number five, yeah.
Your mic isn't on.
Oh, your mic isn't on.
So, number five, you want under, you want what?
This, the revenue should come from, and then whatever that count number is. This one should come from, whatever that count number is in budget, 86, 20, 86, 9, 86, 96. Yeah, wherever, wherever it comes from, you can get that from the treasurer.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, voice vote?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Epstein.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
I am going to be a no. Next up? R. 40, a resolution to establish federal workers' relief program.
Whereas on January 20th, 2025, President Donald Trump was inaugurated President of the United States of America, and whereas the Trump administration proceeded to unfairly and sensitively and maliciously terminate thousands of federal workers, and whereas the Trump administration provided federal workers with a letter of termination that stated that they were being terminated because of poor performance versus a reduction in force, and whereas being terminated for misconduct can lead to the denial of unemployment benefits, and whereas the Trump administration's action has affected a number of Glen Arden citizens' livelihood. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Glen Arden, the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session the 17th day of March 2025 as follows. Number one, that the city of Glen Arden will establish the federal workers' relief program. Number two, the city of Glen Arden will provide a $5,000 relief grant to each qualified Glen Arden citizen that was a federal worker and has been terminated due to the Trump administration policies. Number three, criteria for applying will be established. A, suggested criteria, A, citizen of Glen Arden. B, must have been a permanent federal employee. C, must have been terminated after January 20th, 2025. D, must have a letter of termination from a federal agency. E, must show recent paycheck stub. F, must show that you applied for unemployment. Number four, grants will be awarded until funding is exhausted or the end of the program on June 30th, 2025. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage by the City of Glen Arden Council.
All right, is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Council President, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you, I think this is a great idea. However, I have a couple of questions about how recent developments around federal workers being able to return to work who had previously been terminated, or other judge orders putting temporary hold, how does this impact it? Like, what if we end up giving somebody the money, and then they, they have their job back?
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I was thinking about that recently, you know, a lot of people got called back to work, but of course, Trump said for 45 days. So, we know what's going to happen in 45 days, and 45 days, he's going to follow the proper procedure to terminate them. So, if we want to make this legislation effective 45 days from now, because a lot of people came back, we can do that, just to be sure no one is double dipping. I think we could do that. Yeah, so, that's how I think we need to address that.
Okay, Councilwoman Fareed, was that all?
Yeah, I'm just, the 45 days, it, you know, everything keeps moving so quickly, that, you know, that 45 days might turn into a longer period of time. I think I'm, I'm more inclined to say, let's table this resolution until there's some more resolution in, at the federal level in terms of what happens, and then we can bring it back, so we can make sure that we're not, you know, going back and forth on who should get money and who's eligible, who's not eligible. I think it's going to be more confusion for us to try to administer it properly until some of these things are nailed down a little bit more concretely, with the judges and their rulings.
Sir, Councilman Herring?
I would rather have the program in place, because we don't know. It could be 45 days and maybe shorter than that. I guarantee you, people are going to be fired. He's, he's already fired 50% of the Department of Education, and he fired them correctly. So, I think it's, I mean, we may have people already that have not been called back, because remember, everybody has not been called back. Certain, certain departments have been, and the judge that ruled that they had to come back also clearly stated that this is not saying that they cannot be fired, is that, that you've got to follow federal law when it comes down to a reduction in force. And that's exactly what they're going to do when they decide to terminate. So, these people will, will be losing their jobs eventually, I mean, I'm telling you that. As long as they follow the letter of the law, there's really nothing that no judge can do for that. The federal government has a right to do reductions in force, and the judge made that quite clear. So, I think we need to have this program in place, because it is going to happen, and that way, we won't have to revisit it again. At least it's in place, and they can come and do what they got to do. Also, on line 35, which I wanted to modify, where it says, a qualified Glen Arden resident that was a federal worker or a contract worker, federal or contract worker? Federal, a federal contract worker, yeah, or a federal contract worker. Yes.
Councilwoman Jones? Oh, I'm sorry, I see your hand, Councilwoman Fareed, are you done?
No, I'm sorry, it took me, I couldn't get the hand up. But I, I just wanted to know, do we have a, an idea of how many residents this would potentially impact, and do we have the money? Can we afford to, to pay each of them $5,000? Or is it on like a first come, first served basis?
If we take it up to the 300,000, we can service maybe 60 people, and it would be a first come, first served. Also, of course, we do have the money. When we originally appropriated money for the rebate program, we put in there 1.5 million dollars. Of that 1.5 million dollars, we only used $400,000. To continue the rebate program, we really only needed another really $400,000, maybe $500,000. That's, that would still leave, you know, $600,000 that we can spend on this program, which is $300,000. So, the money is there, we just, we never expensed all the money from the rebate program, so we have money that we saved in that program, and plus, it was already, it was already over budgeted. So, the funds are there. So the funds are there.
Sorry, but we just passed the resolution to use that money. So if all the residents who did not apply for the program previously do apply for it, then that money's gone. We don't have any savings from that.
We do, because we budgeted one point five million dollars. Of the one point five million dollars, we so far only used four hundred thousand dollars of that. That was for fifty percent of the residents. We got another eight hundred residents that have not applied for it. So if they all apply for it, that's only going to be four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that was money left over from the one point one, would that leave us about seven hundred thousand dollars from the one point one? Left over from that. So if we take three hundred thousand dollars of that, that'd still leave us with four hundred thousand dollars left over from that. So the money is there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, when we talk about, you know, establishing the program without, you know, establishing it right now as opposed to waiting until we have more concrete things, I'm just concerned that we're establishing a program and it is only going to be able to service sixty families. I know that was a concern even when we were talking about the tutoring services on the limited amount of students that would be able to be reached and the need being so much greater. And I can imagine for unemployed federal workers, the need is even greater than sixty, given the fact that that's one of the predominant industries in Glen Arden and certainly in this area. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Fareed. This is a bit premature. The federal government asked the people to leave. Now the federal judge has said that they have to come back to work until those things are settled, and we know how this is going to play out. I think this is a bit premature. There are, once they are actually let go, then there's, then unemployment comes in place. If you get this money before you get your unemployment, unemployment is going to include this money. So why put burden the people already going through this reduction in force with another burden? We don't want to play on their being out of work. Also, operationally, this was also discussed operationally, that right now the treasurer's in the midst of two audits. He's in the midst of a budget. Operationally, if he has to put this in place, his office, the finance office, there's only three persons. If he has to put this in place, then it's going to take away from, it's going to, well, it's going to really, I see it as take, it's going to take time to do it because of the fact that the, like I said, the, operationally, we're not prepared to do this just yet. So I would agree that it be tabled until a later date, until we can see how this is playing out. Once the forty-five days is up, we can go there and determine whether we want to put this in place. But right now, today, just to put it in place today, when we have so many unanswered questions about what's going on, the chaos, to me, we're just adding to the chaos. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Mr. President, may I?
Councilman Harry?
Let me just say this. Chaos is when you can't feed your kids. Chaos is when you can't pay your house note. Chaos is when you can't pay your car note. Chaos is when you can't pay your utilities. That's chaos. This is, this is giving a helping hand, and why wait till the last minute to give this helping hand? I didn't hear that when hardship grants went out, and they were five thousand dollars a pop. And no one questioned whether they were on unemployment, and I know people got unemployment and people got a number of benefits. And it was, and who am I to sit there and say they shouldn't have it? They should have had it because they were in a hardship situation. So when you're talking about chaos, then when you, when you get ready to lose the roof over your home or you got to feed your babies and you can't because you've been put out of work, and you got to wait for a discount to the meat and then pass it and then discuss it, then that's chaos. This is giving a helping hand. When you want, I mean, my thing is that's what we're here to do. We are talking about helping people, helping people. My thing is the program should be put in place, and if no one uses it, fine. Or if you want to give it a forty-five day lag period till after the, after the, after the forty-five days for it to start, fine. But the bottom line is this, the judge was quite clear, and we need to read the legal opinion of this judge, is that you still can be fired. You still can be ripped. You just, the government just did it wrong. So it isn't like it's not going to happen. It's when it's going to happen, and it is going to happen. This man is firing people left and right, so you think he's going to sit there and say, okay, I'm going to listen to the judge? No, he's going to say, I followed the protocol. You done told me what I need to do, and I'm going to do it. So when we speak of chaos, let's put that in the perspective. Now, my thing is this, the treasurer will have to just make it work. Everybody else have to make it work. You got, I mean, we're here to help people. Sometimes you got to make that sacrifice. It's all about helping people. It's all about making sure people are not put into a situation that's going to harm them and put them in detriment. But that's what seems like, you know, obviously, you know, some feel that it's okay, as long as it isn't them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Jones, and then I have a comment, then we'll vote. I'm sorry, and Councilwoman Guillaume, I see your hand. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I do understand chaos and what I'm suggesting, I'm not saying that we not help people, but there's so much, so much in and out going with the, at the presidential level, the administration now, that we need to be clear and set up a program that's going to be feasible to help the people. I don't have any issue with helping people. And the other programs that we gave monies away to, that came out of a grant that was given to the city from the ARPA funds. That came from the federal government. It was four million dollars that was extended to the city. We use those monies to do the other issues that we did. This money will be coming out of our reserves. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to ask a question, and then I'll also provide, well, say something else. But do we know, again, I don't believe they did, but I wanted to know if anybody on council knew if the federal employees who were being tasked with coming back to be reinstated, did they get back pay? Does anybody know?
I don't, I don't think we have that information. I don't know. Typically, when, well, I don't know, but I know in the past if, if, you know, when workers came back off of government shutdown, they did receive back pay. And so if they were illegally terminated, that means they, I would think that they would get back paid for that, but I don't know.
Yeah, and that, because I think that's also something to, for us to pay attention to and to also raise this other level of awareness is the federal employees who were brought back, we need to be very clear that while the judge ruled, it's still being appealed, but while the judge ruled that they are to be reinstated, the federal government agencies have purposely kept them on paid leave. They refuse to actually bring them back. They are put on paid administrative, paid administrative leave. So I just want to make sure that people know that it's not, the judge made a decision and everybody's right back to, you know, to the desk that they were occupying. That's it.
Thank you. So I would first like to commend Councilwoman Hairston and Herring for proposing this. I don't think anyone can doubt your heart to serve the community, and so I appreciate that. I do have questions, and I do want to help people. I think this, as Jim said earlier, is just unprecedented times. And I remember saying at a previous meeting that I was just at a loss for what to do because so many people are hurting, so how can we help in the most efficient way? And a slight personal, quick personal story. I remember when me and my mom and my brothers and sisters were about to lose our home. And, you know, of course, the mortgage people wanted the money, but giving the money did not save us. They took our money and we still got kicked out. And from that lens, I'm thinking about what's the best use for the, for the funds? Because I know that was brought up, people can't pay their mortgages, but I do know that people can work with their mortgage companies to get a reduced mortgage payment. You can work with your utilities, but I do think that something should be done. And was wondering if you guys, what I initially thought of is a way to help people initially, what could be an immediately, immediate impact is setting up a fund for utilities and food until we can get some more information out that can be more long-term. So having a fund set up maybe with the same criteria to be able to like make sure people don't miss a meal. Make sure that, I think the hardest people to get in line are the utility companies. I think mortgage companies are pretty more amenable to work with you because they don't want to lose their long-term income. But are you guys open to setting up something like that, to some of these questions can be answered? Because again, I'm not, I don't think that we shouldn't do anything. I just want to make sure that what you doing the, you know, using our funds more efficiently. And if we get, once we get more information out, then rolling out that latter part of the game plan.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you want to bring a plan forward like that, but I would still like this plan to be in, be in place. It kind of really bothers me because this, these questions weren't asked when y'all did the hardship was done, nor the intergenerational was done. When the hardship was done, I actually asked the question, is, are you only going to be spending this on? They can spend it on anything they want to, and council was like, yes. Who are we to tell them what they could spend it on? Now, we're trying to dictate what they're going to spend this on. You know, so I'm not understanding the difference between the two. Both groups need help, you know, and they got, I'm sure they got unemployment and everything else that they needed to get. But again, I just don't see the difference in this program versus that previous program we had where people got five thousand dollars straight up and spent it on whatever they wanted to spend it on. And if you want to do a utility program, which I think is way, way, way more involved than what this is, I mean, you got to get people's utility bills, you got to pay the vendors, you got to do all of that. That's a whole lot of extra expense on, and work on behalf of the city. But I'm just saying, I just, I just don't see that as being feasible. I think this program needs to be put into place because it's going to happen. I don't know why we shouldn't be dragging our feet on it.
Thank you. I just want a quick, didn't we add money for a contractor to help with that?
Yeah, we did, a manager.
Okay, all right. All right. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Guillaume, was that a new hand or old hand?
It was still my hand. I was just going to say that I don't think we need to start breaking down what it should be, start restricting what the, if we are to go this route, we shouldn't be restricting what expense will be paid because some people may have childcare expenses and pay rent as opposed to a mortgage or, you know, there's different things. I guess some people have healthcare, you know, bill. Like, it's just different things that people have. So I just wanted to caution us into restricting what people's challenges should be. That was it, if we go this route.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. I think we can move forward with the vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you. Before I vote, I'm just going to say that I do support a program like this. I am not confident, though, in all of the details at this point, and I am concerned about giving this money and then given the fact that the state and the county are in a budget crisis. I don't want to end up turning around and raising taxes on these same people that we're trying to help because that's not going to be a help to them on top of county and state taxes. So I would like more time to work this out, but since we're going to vote on this now, I'm going to abstain.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Once again, I do believe that we should help people. I believe that this, the management, the administrative management of this resolution is, nothing is in place. I don't think that we should tax the treasurer and his staff with all of this right now, and I do believe that we need to wait to see. Like I said, it's premature. So with that, I shall also abstain.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Are we going to have Himmler on this? Is it Himmler?
They have nobody assigned to it.
Mr. Treasurer, did you put money in the budget for professional services?
Yes, I put some funds in there.
It's fine.
Took care of us until June, July, yeah.
Yes. However, I do, I would like to make sure, as with all of our stuff, that we're getting a full accounting of everything.
Yes, and what I've actually done is set it up to get a temporary help like from Robert Half to come in and assist with this program.
All right.
Put it together.
So it's thirty-nine and forty. And now we're, are we done? Oh, no, two more, sorry. Then we're done. R forty-three. Madam Clerk?
Whereas a two thousand and six Chevrolet Malibu vehicle indicated on the Maryland certificate title number three six four six four one, VIN number one G one Z S five one F two eight three eight eight eight, attached heretofore as Exhibit A, the code vehicle has exceeded its useful life. And whereas pursuant to section eight twenty-eight of the city charter, the council may declare any unusable, obsolete, or outmoded personal property or equipment belonging to the city as surplus property, provided that such items are placed on the city's periodic surplus list posted in the municipal center and circulated throughout the city with the monthly city meeting notice, which shall identify the meetings of, the means of acquisition to be by bid, informal offer, or specified auction date. And whereas the council deems the code vehicle to be unusable, obsolete, and outmoded, has little value, and is no longer required for a public person, purpose, whereas all revenues collected from the sale of surplus property shall be deposited with the treasurer. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the council of the City of Glen Arden, sitting in regular session this seventeenth day of March, 2025, has determined that number one, the attached city-owned property should, so should be declared as surplus, and the council approves of said determination. Number two, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, and the city clerk is hereby directed to certify the passage and adoption of this resolution.
Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, a quick question. So Mr. City Manager, how do you plan to dispose of it? Are you going to offer it for auction or a silent bid or what?
Offer it GovDeals. We had some success with auctioning.
With what?
Govdeals.com. They're very successful with the recent sale of, or should I say last year's, sale of some equipment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Any opposition? Hear none. R dash forty-three is hereby adopted. The last one is R dash forty-four, resolution to declare a city property as surplus and approve auction. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the city's property has exceeded its useful life, and whereas pursuant to section eight twenty-eight of the city charter, the council may declare any unusable, obsolete, or outmoded personal property or equipment belonging to the city as surplus property, and whereas these items can be declared as surplus property and sold to the general public or disposed as such. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this seventeenth day of March, 2025, has determined that number one, the administration has declared the attached list of items as surplus property, which can be sold, disposed to the public, to the highest bidder or offerer. Number two, the notice of sale of surplus property shall be made or offerer. Number two, the notice of sale of surplus property shall be made through a periodic surplus list placed in the municipal center and by circulation throughout the city with the monthly city meeting notice. Number three, the sale notice shall identify the means of acquisition to be, to be by sealed bill, bid, informal off, offer on auction date. Number four, all revenues collected from the sale of surplus property shall be deposited with the treasurer. Number five, all surplus items which are to be sold, are to be sold as is, and no guarantee or warranty of any kind is provided.
Alright, is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question. Um, Mr. City Manager, uh, the computer that's on here, has it been cleaned? The computers that's on here, have they been cleaned?
Um, no, not as of yet, but it will be prior to being, uh, sold or disposed of.
Okay. Who, who are you gonna get to do that? T-Spec?
Uh, I'll either do T-Spec, I'll consult with Media Communications Manager to see what we did with the previous, uh, any other.
Alright, thank you.
Any opposition? Hear none, by now it's consent. R-44 is hereby adopted. I'm sorry, that was not the last one. This is the last one. R-46, a Resolution Authorizing Purchase of a Code Enforcement Vehicle. Madam Clerk?
Whereas the administration seeks the council's approval to authorize the purchase of a code enforcement vehicle within the current budget underlying item 8370308010, and whereas the City Council has previously approved the allotted funds in the fiscal year 25 budget to purchase a pa, to person, a pa, uh, excuse me, purchase a passenger vehicle, and the code enforcement manager has identified a 2024 Ford Escape four-door AWD Active, and whereas it is necessary to purchase a 2024 Ford Escape four-door AWD Active, and whereas in accordance with the City Charter, Section 818(c), the administration has found that Howard County contract number 4400004544 has conducted a competitive bid and procurement process similar to that of the City of Glen Arden, and therefore recommends a purchase from New Holland Group for the 2024 Ford Escape four-wheel drive AWD Active. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this 17th day of March 2025 as follows. Number one, that the purchase of a 2024 Ford Escape four-door AWD Active, VIN number 1FMCU9GNXRUAT27246 from New Holland Group, at a price of $32,710, per the quote attached as Exhibit A to this resolution, B, and it is hereby approved. And number two, payment for the vehicle shall be made from line item 8370308010, support equipment, code enforcement car, within the tw, fiscal year 25 fiscal budget. And number three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, just one question.
Yes, Councilman Herring?
Does outfitting cost, I mean, is outfitting included in the price of the vehicle?
Yes, it is.
It is?
No, excuse me, excuse me, uh, President, I don't believe the outfitting is included in that vehicle.
Hold on, one, please don't try to talk from back there because we cannot hear you. Uh, if you want to come to the podium, um, come to the podium and you can speak on it.
Good evening. No, the outfitting is not within this price, this is the price of the vehicle, um, but I do have the price for the outfitting.
Um, 1,200 bucks in total.
Alright, I'm good.
So can we amend this to include?
No, it's only 1,200. He don't need approval, he don't need.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. Alright.
Thank you.
12 dollars more. Any other discussion? Any opposition? Hear none, by now it's consent. Uh, R-46 is hereby adopted. Okay. Two more things, and we're gonna get to citizens' comments. I know you guys have been extremely patient with us, uh, so thank you. Uh, so next up is the parking, uh, Councilwoman Fareed? City Pa- Councilwoman Fareed, are you there? Well, sure, she's there.
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I don't know why it wouldn't stay off of, uh, from you. Is there a F.I.?
Uh, we don't hear one in the room.
Okay. Go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Yeah, I, I know you want to speak on, uh, the, um, just briefly on the parking, uh, about the flyer from last week and things like that.
Yeah, I just wanted us to, um, take a step back, and I know it was discussed about taking a step back, because there are some certain things that, um, are in the resolution itself that I don't think are accurately reflected on the flyer. Um, for example, it talks about, um, in the resolution that it's not permissible for there to be alterations or modifications that significantly alter the size, and I, I think we have not established what significantly means, and we also need to get an understanding of what, what are modifications? So if something comes factory-specific, like, um, with the, with the roof rack, is that a modification, or is that standard? Um, so I think we need to get some clarity amongst ourselves before we communicate that out, because I think that was some of the concerns that were coming back, um, from some residents. And then, um, just making sure that we have clarity around the personal vehicles and, and why that was put in place. Um, the concerns that we were responding to were, um, concerns around the vehicles obstructing the streets and not allowing passage, clear passage for people. So the size of the vehicle wouldn't change whether it's a personal vehicle or a work vehicle, and that's why vehicles of those size are being asked to be parked in driveways regardless of it's, if it's personal or for work, because we're trying to keep the streets clear so that cars can pass through. I believe that was the chief complaint that we were trying to address. Um, and I don't know if there's anything else from the council, but those are the two points that I wanted to just discuss and, and get some clarity on, and if certainly, you know, we need to pause this until we can get some clarity. I think that's the best approach.
Thank you. And, and we will do just that, as I know we paused it last week, put a hold on it, and so give us some more time to discuss and produce something that adequately fits the, um, and appropriately, uh, accurately fits the, um, the city and the intent. So thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, with that, we will move on. If there's no other comments. Alright, uh, we can move on to the reports. Um, unfortunately, the mayor's not here for any questions, so we can move right on to the city manager. If you can be brief, and we can, uh, give more time for the citizens to comment.
Good evening, um, council members and residents. Um, just give a highlight on a few items that were in my February's report. Um, the Director of Public Works position, as you know, was re-advertised. Um, so we have come to a spot where we believe we have a candidate that will be presenting, uh, to council, uh, for consideration. Uh, the Assistant City Manager's position, uh, has also, uh, been posted. Um, to add, we were able to, as well as the Executive Assistant Position, uh, HR, uh, along with some of our administrative staff, had the opportunity to, um, attend the Prince George's County Job Fair, uh, and we've gotten several applicants for that, so, uh, I'm hoping to be able to, uh, select for those two particular positions. Um, as I said, we, we, we did receive quite a few applicants there. Um, the Police Department, uh, recruitment efforts, uh, they're still underway. I believe that position is closed or closing, uh, so some finality will be there as well. Um, just to point a note, we did receive a refund, uh, from Legit, Legit due to, uh, some property premium miscalculations over the last decade. It's approximately $36,632. Financial overview, payroll and vendor payments remain on schedule. Um, the FY24 audit is, uh, close to being completed. I think we're waiting for some feedback, um, from our auditors, um, and we are, of course, actively pursuing, uh, public impact grants. Code enforcement, uh, is successful in their inspections. Uh, they had 51 inspections during that month and cleared 50, um, with a proposal to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code for stricter enforcement, uh, is on the table and in discussion. Uh, the Gold Room generated approximately, uh, $14,227 in revenue, uh, for that particular month, uh, and then they are expanding their marketing efforts and developing, uh, an online client portal for bookings and invoices. Um, if there, with that, Public Works, um, just to point out that the installation of GPS tracking devices is on all city vehicles, and is working. We actually, uh, and it'll be on next month's report, we actually, uh, did a training with the department heads, uh, to have a better understanding of how we can use the metrics to help us with future budgeting, uh, as well as, uh, just maintaining departments and, and, and properly maintaining city vehicles. Um, the Public Works pickup truck, the new EV, uh, the V-cals have just recently been finished, as well as the safety lights, uh, and that's ready for pickup this week. Um, just looking ahead, we're gonna continue focusing on, uh, the hiring key personnel, um, continuing to identify what I call OFIs, or opportunities for improvement, uh, within each department, uh, as well as, uh, continuing to just develop and build the administrative staff and other departments to be of the support, uh, the council's directives, as well as, uh, support, uh, our community and residents. Uh, with that being said, I'm up for questions.
Alright, thank you. And Mr. Simpson covered all of the departments except for the Chief of Police, so what I'll just do is, I'm sorry?
No, I think I may, I may not have mentioned.
Look, I, what I will do is, outside of the police, I'll, um, open the floor to council members for questions on all administrative reports except for the, the chief. Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, so where are we at with the speed bumps?
Uh, I actually just received an email from, um, uh, Mr. Kapinski. Mr. Kapinski and CPJA did meet finally, um, and we do have a clear to go for War III and War I. Uh, my hope is that, uh, while NZI is scheduled, and I forgot to mention this, uh, the contracts with NZI, uh, for the War I and other street improvements and sidewalk, Church Street, uh, Glen Arden Parkway, uh, should be taking place within two or three weeks. I actually walked with, uh, NZI's representative today, just to confirm the areas, as well as, uh, we look at Hayes Street, uh, it may be, uh, some full asphalt milling in those sections just considering the level of damage. Um, so I'm sorry, can you, you repeat your, your question again? I'm sorry, Mr. Herring.
Speed bumps?
Speed bumps. Um, I'm hoping with NZI, um, because there is a bit of a surplus available, that, uh, we can confirm those locations while they're doing the construction work, uh, get you a quick approval from council, um, as far as the exact locations, uh, once CPJA gives us their recommended locations, which should happen hopefully within this next week.
So you're trying to do permanent speed bumps?
Uh, yes, sir. I believe that is part of what, now, if you would like to go with the pilot program and put in the temporary speed bumps, we, we, we're clear to go. I can get that done.
I would do that, I mean, I, 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 I've been asking for, I don't know how long, for this program to go into effect, and I'm just not understanding, because my thing is, I, last time we had permanent speed bumps, the, the citizens didn't like them to put them up. So I said, let's try it again with temporary speed bumps, just to see if it actually works. Um, I guess my issue is, let me ask a question. Have, have the streets been measured for speed bumps?
Uh, CPJA is going through the measurements. I personally measure streets as well, so yes, we do have measurements.
You measure streets?
Yes, sir.
CPJ measures streets?
CPJA was retained as, per the recommendation, primarily for War III, but also to identify locations for.
How many people in Public Works?
When I say I, I'm also referring to Public Works, but we do have, what, I think, five or six team members?
And they've measured streets?
Uh, no, they.
They have not measured streets?
They themselves have not. I work with Public Works to go out and do some measurements.
So, I guess my question is, if they're out picking up trash every day, they pick up trash all over the city, correct? They can't measure the streets while they're out there?
I'll definitely consider that and make sure whatever adjustments need to be made.
See, this is why nothing's getting done, because I mean, we, we have a staff here that we pay quite a bit of money to, and I don't care whether it's a little bit of money or they could have considered a little bit of money, considered a lot of money, but we pay staff and nothing's getting done because it's not being used efficiently. If you're out there picking up trash, how long does it take to take a, 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 a measurer and roll across the street and right down the street and the width? See, and things are not getting done because, like, I don't know why things aren't getting done. I'm telling you the truth, honestly. I'm just trying, I'm just mystified, because this has been going on for now per near a year, um, with these speed bumps and this pilot program, and I'm just not understanding why you're measuring streets and CPJ is measuring streets and we got a whole Public Works staff, and I'm gonna tell you this too, I only see one out there, so I don't know where the rest of them at, but, um, I have a problem with that.
Yes, sir.
You know, again, so, um, and so, and with, uh, Hayes Street, so are they gonna, CPJ, I mean, not CPJ, NZI, they gonna fill in the power, they gonna mill it and fill it in? So, will it be able to handle the bus traffic on that street?
So, eh, there is a bit of a concern of possibly, doesn't it, the, the soil, um, that's clay. Uh, with, walking with NZI today, um, on Hayes Street, we also looked at a section of Glen Arden Parkway, uh, right there near MLK, where there was some WSSC work that was done. And we see that right behind that area, it looks like some of that area is caved in. We do believe with the full death, uh, patching, as well as exposing that area, we're gonna look at reinforcing it. Um, I don't know if there's a guarantee there until we actually open that area up, and it's possible that the soil and the clay, uh, if it is clay, uh, that it could potentially come back in about three to five years, but I'm gonna get some confirmation as it relates to that. The recommendation now is definitely full death patch, uh, or possibly just milling, uh, Hayes Street, uh, from the areas where we see the alligator cracks in those potholes, uh, down towards Glen Arden Parkway.
Okay. Alright, thank you, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for City Manager Simpson? Let's move forward with that pilot program and, and War I. Alright, next up, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, let me say, um, the incident earlier involving the mayor, um, take no pleasure in, um, taking measures like that, um, but it's my job to, um, make sure that, um, we have order and safety. Um, and like I told the mayor several times, um, gave her warnings and stuff, stepped out, talked to her, um, gave her several warnings, um, spoke with the attorney, but it's my job to make sure we have safety and order. Um, so I take no pleasure in making those moves, but it is my job to make sure that each and every individual is safe, um, and make sure we have order, and I'll continue to do my job as Chief of Police for the City of Glen Arden. In reference to crime, um, over the past two months, in January, February, in the whole, um, DMV area, we had, um, a trend of vehicle theft and stolen autos. Um, that trend is starting to decline now. Um, in these meetings with the county, um, in other jurisdictions, um, they put some measures in place and made some key arrests. and made some key arrests. So we also starting to see that decline in this area also. They're basically keying on pretty much anything that you can see inside of your vehicles with these break-ins in the vehicles, and there's also stealing tags and stuff. We're also able to recover a lot of stolen vehicles from other areas in the city of Glen Arden. So they're basically stealing vehicles from other areas and dropping them off in the city of Glen Arden. But the trend is also declining. We've picked up some of the vehicles here. So that, like I said, has been a decline in that. In reference to the upcoming event with the expungement that Councilman Herring and Harrison have been putting on, getting put on in April, I've been getting several calls from the state's attorney's office and Prince George's County Police Department Records Division from Ms. Holdover there who actually signed up on the expungements. So I'll be giving that information to Councilman Herring and Harrison for additional information, some questions and sharing information in reference to that. And we'll be working with them in reference to that on the nineteenth, which is, like I said, outstanding program, people asking a lot of questions about it. In addition to that, I'll be having a Chiefs Association meeting. I've been appointed to the Chiefs Association Board as a secretary this year, so we'll be having a Chiefs Association meeting here next Tuesday, and I'll be waiting to hear from the council in reference to the annual award ceremony, which has been, that's been kind of postponed. It's supposed to be June eighteenth, but the date's been changed, and I'll be waiting to hear from the council in reference to the utilization of the Gold Room in reference to that. But we still have time in reference to that, but we'll be having a two-hour meeting here next week, and they'll be talking about the expungement and some other events that's coming up in the area. So that's all I have at this particular time. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Herring?
Yes. Can I share my screen right quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Question, Chief?
One second.
Oh, okay.
Just remind me to take it back once you finish.
Okay.
You should be good now.
Okay. This accident here. Here. Was anybody hurt in this accident?
Yes, the bus driver was hurt in that accident.
Were there people on the bus? Were there people on the bus?
To my knowledge, it was just the metro bus driver at this particular time, but it was several vehicles, several individuals in a striking vehicle.
And I heard they ran off?
Yes.
And we haven't heard anymore?
Right, I spoke with the metro bus driver today and Metro in reference to follow-up, so we're still following up on that incident right there. So I did speak to the bus driver today. He was coming along, but he's still out on leave in reference to his injury.
Okay, so a commercial vehicle hit the bus coming across the intersection?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, so and we never, and the suspects that were in the van, we never found out who they were?
No. Got a description of him, but he do have video footage from the metro bus.
Right.
Yeah, so they're following up on that and see if they can get some additional information so we can try to obtain a warrant in reference to that.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
One other question. I know there's a question in Woodmore. There was a concern that there were a lot of marshals that came to Woodmore in the Nitter Clubhouse, and, you know, while I understand that, you know, marshals wouldn't tell a fugitive, "Hey, I'm coming to get you." There was a little bit of concern because it was during a time where the kids were waiting for the buses on the school, and you had like people with tactical gear. So do we know anything on that? Some people, it was rumors that it was a training exercise and all this other stuff, but just didn't know without getting into, you know, private detail if, you know?
I didn't get a call on that.
Okay.
Yeah, most time when other police agencies come into a jurisdiction, they usually give us a call, and we usually assist the other jurisdictions with a courtesy. They usually give us a heads up by then they gain information in reference to that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know the truth.
I saw PG County Police out, actually in our parking lot, so.
Yeah, we usually get a call on it. Most time when the other, you know, jurisdiction come in, especially when they perform an operation, like a warrant and stuff like that, they usually give us a call in reference to that. So it might need to spend a meetup for some information or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, but anytime they're gonna execute a warrant or something, they must definitely give us a call, some type of action, when lawful, something's gonna be lawful, some kind of lawful execution.
All right.
Give us a call.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Thank you, sir.
All right.
And just to piggyback off of what the chief said, like, when I stepped out, there was a green light by the chief, one, to move forward with a sworn in, and two, to give the approval of removal of the mayor. So appreciate the chief handling that in a very professional and calm manner. With that, we'll move on to the last item on the agenda, which is citizens' comments. For citizens in the house, please raise your hand. I'll ask you to come to the podium. I ask you to come to the podium. You'll state your name, what ward you're from, and you'll have five minutes to speak on whatever you want to speak on. I just ask that you be courteous and professional. If I happen to interrupt to let you know something, you know, I didn't turn it back over to you, but we accept there will not be any verbal attacks to anyone. And there's a timer right here of five minutes, and once your timer's up, once you hit a beep, we'll let you finish your sentence out, and then if there's any more, you have to say, "I'm happy to stay behind and hear you out." For all those online, I know you cannot see the timer, so when the timer's up, I'll let you know, and then you can finish, you can close out your statement, and we can move on. So with that, the floor is open, and I saw the gentleman standing right here first. And name and ward, please.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Donald Haynes. I'm at fourteen forty-one Eleventh Street here in Glen Arden. My concern is a trailer that I have. It's a utility trailer with the gross vehicle weight of two thousand nine hundred and ninety pounds. It's in my driveway. It's been there since 2013, and now I have, well, I haven't gotten a citation, but I noticed that I will be getting a citation. And the section that was checked is the commercial vehicle section. I've looked through all the other sections, and there's nothing about a utility vehicle that's clearly within a ton and a half, but it seems to be an ongoing issue there. So it's not a work vehicle, it's a personal vehicle. I have a picture of it if you're interested in seeing it. Okay?
Sorry, sure, I'm interested in looking at it. Mr. Green, if you can come up, please? Yes, sure. Anybody else want to say?
How's this my ATV?
Oh, it's a trailer.
Yes, and it's in my yard, in my driveway.
Okay. Mr. Herring, I'm sorry, it's Councilman Herring. Did you want to see it?
I see it.
Okay. Mr. Green, did you want to see this?
Yes.
Okay, here you go, sir. Thank you. And, yeah, you can go back to the podium. And so what is your question? Or do you have a comment or question?
Yes, my question is, why do I keep getting this with the commercial vehicle section checked?
Okay.
And it says, "No vehicle tractor-trailer or tractor-trailer combination with trailer underlined," but that's not a tractor-trailer. I drive tractor-trailers. This is not a commercial vehicle.
Can I see that piece of paper you're looking at?
Absolutely.
Mr. Green? And where, you say, okay.
That's the section.
"No person shall park any commercial vehicle or other tractor, trailer, or tractor-trailer combination upon any public or residential property except for the purpose of making local deliveries to said property." Okay, thank you. All right, so it is, and, I'm sorry, are you done? Would you like me to respond, or do you have more to say?
Please respond.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Green, you can step up too, because you corrected me if I'm wrong, because I've been wrong twice already tonight. It is my understanding that the county has a restriction on trailers. Is that true or not?
That is correct.
So, so by county law, you cannot have a trailer in your driveway?
That is also correct.
Okay, I was unable to find that on the county. I looked for it, but maybe I just overlooked it. This is the old law, and this is the new. So I gotta buy you both to beat me for that.
So the only exception is for pole trucks, and those are the trouble that...
One second. You gotta use the mic.
So the only exception for this county law is for pole trailers. They also have, and I'll read it, it's new code, section twenty-seven dash six-three-zero-five H two, and it says the violation, "Trails other than boat and camping trailers are not permitted in the zone."
In the county.
In the residential zone area.
In the residential zone area.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, sir, that's what I wanted to get to. So we can be more restrictive than the county, but we can't be more loose than the county. So if the county says no trailers, let's say they say no trailers of five thousand pounds, then we can probably go and say, okay, well, in the city of Glen Arden, we don't want any trailers over two thousand pounds. So it could be more restrictive, but if the county sets a law, then the city cannot override the county. So because the county says that you cannot have a trailer in the residential zone, there's nothing that we can do.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other, I'm sorry, see, sir?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Powell, and I live in Ward One, and I have a question for the Chief of Police, Chief Bryant. According to the census, about thirty-eight percent of Glen Arden population are immigrants. What's the city policy in dealing with ICE agents? Can ICE agents come into the city and go door-to-door looking for people and stopping people to see if they legal? Now, what's the city policy regarding enforcement of immigration, immigration policy?
Hello, Mr. Powell. Good question, and that's a concern, I think, of several citizens we talked about at the Chiefs Association's meeting, and I think Councilman Fareed came up with a resolution in reference to that. We got guidelines in reference to that. In reference to ICE agents coming into the city of Glen Arden and any other jurisdiction, they allow, because they're federal government agency, they can come into any of the jurisdictions because they're federal government agencies. When they come into the jurisdictions, they are supposed to notify, they're supposed to notify the municipality or city or the police department. They can, sometimes they might, and they might not, but once we're notified of it, we respond to the scene, and we take notes. We're not to interfere with the investigation. So our job is basically there to monitor, we're not to interfere with their operations. But it's our job to make sure that our citizens feel safe and to make sure we give them the information they need. We're not to give out information in reference to our citizens, to ICE agents. So we're just there to monitor. We're not to intervene, but at the same time, we're not to give information to that agency in reference to our citizens. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask a question on the chief while you're still up there? So let me ask a question. So if they reach out to you to assist, do you assist?
As far as assisting, only time we assist them is in a dangerous situation, like a life and safety, life and death situation. But as far as putting hands on and getting involved, we're not involved in that.
Okay, just one sec.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Jones?
I'm sorry, chief, but I attended a PG CMA meeting that included CASA, and CASA gave the instructions that the only thing that the police really could do is make sure that the documents that the ICE agents have reflect what they're doing. Am I not understanding that?
Yes, so if they got documentation, if they got documentation, so say they got documentation, we can review the documentation, but we're not obligated to review the documentation because they take documentation, they still gotta go before the judge with the documentation. So if they got false documentation, that'd be on them. So it's our job, we're not gonna intervene. So if they got false documentation, take that before the judge, they gotta deal with the judge on that. So if they got documentation, most of the time, they'll share the documentation with us, but we're not gonna go up to them and say, "Oh, let me check your paperwork and this and this and that." So we're just there to observe.
No, the response I got was different, that whatever documentation that they have is supposed to have come from a judge before they can do what they're doing.
Right, right.
And that the police and the municipalities can also look at it to make sure that what they're doing is what the documentation that they have from the judge says that they can do.
As a courtesy, but we don't have to go and say, "Oh, I gotta check your paperwork." No.
Oh, I got, okay. I didn't think it was a courtesy. I thought it was...
No, 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 no. I'm like I say, you know, it's just like when somebody come to serve a warrant in our jurisdiction, if they got the paperwork, just like the President Curtis asked me a question earlier about the marshals, I did get some additional information on that. There was the marshals, they came to serve a warrant. My sergeant was notified on that. They did come to serve a warrant at their location, they notified us after the fact. But they did come to serve a warrant, but they had the paperwork on it.
Okay.
Right, because they gotta go before a judge. So as a courtesy, they can let us know, but if they got the paperwork, they still gotta go before the judge with paperwork. So if that paperwork is wrong and they got the wrong person, that's a lawsuit for them and the agency. So we don't have to go like, "Oh, I gotta check your paperwork before you go in there" because everybody took their over. So, you know, you gotta deal with that. All right?
Okay. Councilwoman Gill?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to clarify what chief was saying. Are we talking about if ICE were to try to come and get someone, and we needed to verify if they had a warrant? I just couldn't hear clearly.
Oh, her question was, if they have paperwork on the individual, do we have to check their paperwork before ICE take the person? I said, we're not obligated to check their paperwork.
So, and, yeah, I guess I heard Councilwoman Jones. So what I'm hearing is, they can come and say, "We have paperwork to come get person X," and they come and get person X, even though that documentation that they probably have in their hand is not valid, they can still get person X? Is that what...
What I'm saying, if they come and got the, we can check, we can ask them to check it, but we're not obligated to check the person because they're federal government with their paperwork. So if they take that person, they still gotta go before a judge. They just can't take that person and not go before a judge.
Okay, yeah, because I think, so I, not I think, I heard similar to what Councilwoman Jones said, like I heard differently, but that's it. I'll just leave it at that. But what Councilwoman Jones mentioned is what I heard as well.
Well, let me clarify. So we had a Chiefs Association meeting last month, and we all talked about it, the Chiefs Association, that the municipalities, because we did have... Chief's Association, that the municipalities, um, because we did have some of, um, some of ICE going, some of the different municipalities, um, I think they went in Brentwood, and I think they went in Comall Manor, uh, around the school areas, and some of the people were afraid to go to work and so forth. And so the chief was saying over there that they had some of the situations, some similar and so forth, and, you know, um, about it being federal government and stuff, so, you know. And we all got paperwork in reference on how we deal with ICE agents coming from federal government and stuff, so, um, and once again, that, that point came up where, you know, um, the, when they take the person and the body, they have to go before the judge, so, we're not obligated to check their paperwork, and they're supposed to have the paperwork with them, you know. But we're not obligated to say, hey, oh, let me see your paperwork, and this and this and that. We can ask them, and they can show it to us as a courtesy.
No, I, I get that part, I guess for me, it's if the citizen, if the individual does not have a green card or whatever it may be, right? And the federal agency does not have proper documentation, as far as warrants are concerned, signed off by a judge, what I'm hearing is, from you, Chief, is the federal agency can still get this person because we're not obligated to have, we, meaning the police, is not obligated to check to see if the documentation is valid, and then they will have to appear in front of a judge, and etc., etc., I hear from that. But what ultimately happens is now someone has been, I, I doubt they'll let somebody go now that didn't have any documentation to be in the country, you know what I mean?
Better for you, Ms. Gill, um, Councilwoman Gill. So say they come to pick a person up, right? And I'm standing there, one of my officers standing there, and, you know, that person is saying, you know, this person is, you know, obviously afraid or intimidated or whatever, and then, you know. Now, I got reservations about it, and, you know, I might be feeling, you know, suspect, it ain't my jurisdiction. I, I ask for the paperwork, and the officer can ask for the paperwork, hey, just let me verify that, just to check, you know, trust but verify, we have no problem with that. So, yeah, we can do that, you know, but I'm just, I'm just saying, we don't have to go up there on every occasion, hey, you know, let me check this, like, you know, like a package delivery, you know, oh, let me sign off on this before you move forward. That's all I'm saying. Yeah, but it is listed where, you know, they're supposed to have the documentation, the paperwork, because I'm pretty sure they're not just gonna come in there and, you know, say, oh, I'm gonna grab this person right here and take this person without the proper paperwork for them, but I see your point of view, and, um, with my officers and stuff, if somebody come in here, you know, I can instruct my officers to check the paperwork, that's no problem. And just to make sure for the city of Glen Arden, if somebody do come in there, I have my officers check the paperwork, that's no problem. Just to make sure for the city of Glen Arden, we're straight.
Okay, that was it, I just wanted to clarify, thank you so much.
Mr. President, may I ask one question? So let me ask a question, are the federal agents obligated to show you paperwork?
Yes, so, um, if they come into your jurisdiction, they've been given the instruction, hey, if you come into a municipality and got the paperwork, you know, you, you can show them the paperwork. Now, they might come and say, no, I'm not gonna show you the paperwork, but that very highly unlikely they won't show you the paperwork.
So if they don't show you the paperwork, what happens?
Once again, we're just there to observe.
You just said observe.
Exactly, we're not gonna, yeah, we ain't gonna wrestle them on the ground.
It's a courtesy, but...
Yeah, exactly, a courtesy both ways.
Right.
Good question, Mr. Herring, I appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens' comments? Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name is Axel, I live in, uh, seven-seven-zero-zero, Glen Parkway, and, uh, my question is about the commercial vehicles.
Please turn the mic on.
Is the mic on? Oh, there we go, there we go. Uh, that was my question about the commercial vehicles, about the whole parking situation. From my understanding, I think the limit was ten thousand, that you can have a commercial vehicle?
Eighty-five hundred.
It was eighty-five, or something like that? So my question is, is it possible we could park those commercial vehicles inside the driveway? Or you just can't have a commercial vehicle over eight thousand five hundred pounds?
So are you, are you referencing a vehicle you have that's over eighty-five hundred pounds?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Green, I wanted if you can step up again, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong. What are the limits for the county?
If you're gonna have a vehicle parked in your driveway, it cannot be over eighty-five hundred pounds. In addition to that, you can have, the lettering cannot be, um, larger than four inches from top to bottom, and it can only be the firm name on the vehicle as well. So any vehicle over eighty-five hundred is illegal.
From a county standard, correct? Okay. So, yeah, and, and that's what we're trying to, like, there's nothing we can do for the county apart. If the county says nothing over eighty-five hundred, there's nothing that we can do as a city to override the county. What we are, are doing is things under eighty-five hundred, uh, we are, you know, trying to structure something that can work for all, uh, citizens, whether it be, you know, um, parking too close to a driveway or things like that, but commercial vehicles itself, over eighty-five hundred pounds, is a county issue, and we can't overthrow the county.
Is, is that, how can I say, is that law still ongoing, or is that like final right there, like?
For the county, yes, and so what I would encourage you to do is, when there are county council meetings, that you go, uh, and advocate, uh, on, you know, to, for them to readdress their decision to have that restriction. In my opinion, there aren't too many people that go and lobby on the county level, I mean, you see, there's not a lot of people here, so, the first step will be to go to your, uh, your representative to lobby on that front, and then if they change it, then it could come to us. So as I said before, let's say, um, they lift the restriction, then it will fall on the city if we put a restriction in, and that's what we can do. That's when we can step in and do something about it, but right now, we can't do anything.
So for now, we have a vehicle that is over eight thousand five hundred pounds? Until when do we have to be able to change that, or is it just...
I believe there is, uh, off-site parking, I, I, I don't recall. Is there anywhere to park? If, if, if there, if there are citizens right now who have vehicles over eighty-five hundred pounds, where can they go to park their vehicle?
Uh, it's not anywhere within... Unfortunately, it's not anywhere within the city of Glen Arden that they can park. You know, they may can go to, uh, area outside of Glen Arden. Some people are paying for storage units, uh, some people are locating areas that's, um, industrial or commercial and parking their vehicles there, uh, but within the city of Glen Arden, there is no location.
Is this a work vehicle? Is it possible for you to place it, uh, to park it at your, um, place of work?
So, yeah, that, that's where my question goes of, how long do we have until the, as if I go to my company, I tell them, I need to change this car, until when do they have to give me another vehicle to change that?
Oh, um, well, I, I can't speak to, to, to when they will give you another vehicle, but I can speak to that as of now, right now.
Immediately.
Immediately, because the law is already on, but this isn't a law that just passed. This has been a law that's been on the books for a while. Now, has it been, been enforced? Probably not. But as of now, it, it's illegal to be in the county, in residential areas in the county.
Mr. President?
Got it.
Can I ask Mr. Green, so how long does he have to get the car out of the city?
I mean, technically, the, the vehicle is, is illegal today, so usually, it's an immediate type of deal where you have to get it out of the city.
President, appreciate it.
Council President, may I?
Councilwoman Gill?
I, thank you, I just want to say that while it's illegal to have it in the city and, and, you know, it's, it's the law from the county perspective, and we have to abide by that, I do think that one of the things that has been happening is it has not been enforced, and that's what got us to where we are right now. So I do think that it's very draconian of us to just say, well, it shouldn't have been in the city, so it needs to be out by today or tonight. So I, I do agree with the question that Councilmember Herring asks, which is Mr. Green, or council, you know, is it up to, can we say he has a week, you know, or, or, or four days? Like, just to say that it shouldn't have been here and it has to be out by tomorrow or tonight is, is, is very difficult for me to receive from where I'm at.
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Green, I'd like you to step in.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, trying to apply the law fairly across the city of Glen Arden, we, we hadn't had a policy that provides for, um, a grace period type of situation, but, um, I do agree that, um, you know, we can give some type of, of grace period, give them, you know, seven days to, um, to remove the vehicle, with the understanding that there are other citizens that may be in this same situation, so we will have to adopt a policy to give everyone that same amount of time.
Right, and I, and I, and trust me, I understand, and I absolutely agree that the vehicles cannot be in the city, period. It can't, right? And so, I, I don't know if, if it's the, and thank you, Mr. Green, I don't know if it's the, I'm, I'm fine with a week, I don't know if it's the will of the council to say a week, but I, I just, for me, it didn't sit well with me to just hear, you know, that it shouldn't have been in here, it shouldn't be here, so he doesn't have time. So now the citizen of the, the resident now knows that the vehicle cannot be here, and he has, oh, you know, a week, you know, or however we want to say, a week, four days, whatever, to, to have it removed. And from there, um, that's for everybody, every, these call, these meetings are recorded, and it is what it is at this point. I just wanted to, to just put it out there that it didn't, it didn't sit well with me originally hearing it, but I'm fine.
Councilwoman Gill? Councilman Herring?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we allow for a seven-day grace period for people to remove their vehicles from the city of Glen Arden once given notice by the code enforcement officer.
I second that. Any discussion? Any opposition? So, um, I can't promise you that a county vehicle won't come, uh, I don't see many of them, to tell you the truth. But what we can tell you is that, and now that you've given us notice, that, you know, the city won't, will give you a, a seven-day grace period so that you can make arrangements for your vehicle. Are there any other? Ms. Alita Hunter?
Good evening, can you hear me? Hello? Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, um, everyone. Um, I just had a couple of quick comments, um. The first one regarding, um, the last citizen that was, uh, as new people move, um, new residents come to the city of Glen Arden, how are we informing them, um, that we are going to, the city is going to enforce, you know, not having these, uh, commercial vehicles being allowed in the city? Because, you know, I would just hate to see someone coming in and they're happy they found their, you know, starter home, or forever home, or family home, and then they get here, and they're not told beforehand that, you know, these are, these type of vehicles aren't allowed in the city. I don't know what if anything the council can do, or the city of Glen Arden can do, or if you are even aware of when someone is in the process of moving into the city. The other thing is, um, I just want to mention Hayes Street, however, I, um, was able to speak with the city manager, I think I was, city manager, or holding, city manager, after the last meeting, and so, um, and I heard what was said tonight about that, so I'll let that rest. What I cannot allow to rest, and I will continue to bring this up until there is a resolution for this critical issue in the city, Ward One. Uh, my apologies, um, Alita Hunter, Ward One. The running of the stop signs on Glen Arden Parkway, I say from Johnson Avenue, this, one up to, uh, Echoes, up to Echoes Avenue, it is really an issue, and I'm talking about buses, commercial vans, I mean, almost every morning when I'm leaving out, I, even if I don't see anything, I have to stop and literally sit there and count, because nine times out of ten, somebody's gonna come flying down that street, or flying up that street and blow right through those stop signs. I suggested putting the flashing lights on those stop signs, but I mean, it's a huge concern, a huge concern. I watch as these children are walking across to go to the bus stop, barely clearing the crosswalk before a car comes barely through, or they don't stop if they're in the crosswalk, they will go around them in the crosswalk. Now, I'm talking school buses, commercial vehicles, the loud cars are like to race through here like it's a, a racetrack. We have got to do something about this, this has been going on for way too long. I would like to know from the police department, from code enforcement, from the council members, what do we have planned? What is in place or what will be put in place to rectify this serious issue before someone gets hurt or worse killed? And I hate to say it like that, but it, it's just, it's, it's too much, they're already speeding, and then they're blowing through these stop signs. So, um, I think that's pretty much all I have. Councilman Herring in Harrison, thank you so much for that federal government, um, resolution that you brought forth, I heard the discussions on it, and I, I kinda mentioned something last week, but I have a, um, great appreciation for you doing this and caring about the citizens, because when I was actually out on medical leave for two years and towards the end, before I went back, I wasn't getting paid at all, and, um, I can't even think of the name of the resolution now. But it, it tremendously, it made a difference between me being able to feed my children, pay my car note, get my medication, until I went back to work, you know, I was one of the ones, I did not get unemployment for whatever reason, as long as I worked, I could not get unemployment, although I was not getting paid, but I'm here at a household, taking care of two kids for my own. But that, um, gosh, I don't know why I can't think of the name of, and my apologies, but it was a true blessing, and I just love the fact that the council members are so concerned about the citizens of Glen Arden as a whole, and I thank you all for all that you do. I think that's all I have. But yes, I would like to know about those stop signs, and what's being done, or what's in the plans to be done about that, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. To address, uh, the stop sign issue, I will say that the police department, um, has taken an initial step to just survey, uh, you know, the, uh, stop, the traffic, uh, on Glen Arden Parkway in Ward One, as relates to people moving through the stop signs. They have implemented cameras and doing their due diligence to be able to give the council some sound data on what we can do next. Uh, so I commend the chief and, um, and Captain Robinson and Sergeant Richardson on, um, taking initiative to do that. And now we have to move forward with what it is that we want to do. I know we talked about the flashing stop signs, uh, did we get anywhere with that? Mr. Simpson?
I do have some information on that, and we should be able to get some things installed. I'll share that with council hopefully this week, uh, for a decision, for a decision.
Okay, uh, I know that, um, uh, as it relates to traffic going in and out of, what's that school called, Glen Arden Woods, that they have been made aware, because, uh, during the week, uh, some of the offenders are, um, the parents of, uh, the students that go there, and so they have made announcements, uh, they put it in the chat for the parents to make sure they come to a complete stop, uh, at those stop signs. And I agree that buses are also included, uh, but I think the next step is for the council then to act on, what it is we want at those stop signs. stop signs, whether it be just flashing stop signs or at a camera that has a ticketing mechanism so that, you know, the violators can be held accountable. Councilman Herring?
Yeah. And that's why I was adamant about trying to get the speed bump program, because again, you can have all stop signs in the world and all the speedlight cameras in the world that you want, but if they're not slowing down, that's another issue.
Yep.
And that's why it's a two-pronged effect that we have to do in order to slow traffic down, and that's, those speed bumps are going to be important. And that's why I was trying to get them done and get them in place, so we can at least try to slow some of this traffic down. Because again, you do hear, especially on the weekends, they're flying through the city. They're flying through yesterday. And also, thank you for the compliments. I'm just trying to do my job as a council member and just help out the citizens in this community, because I know it's going to be tough on a lot of them. And, you know, this is just a little I can do. So appreciate, thank you for the compliments. All right.
All right. Are there any other, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gill?
No, just wanted to say it was the Good Samaritan Fund. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Good Samaritan Hardship Fund, sorry. Good Samaritan Hardship Fund. Thank you. And you're welcome as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Okay. So one of the questions that Ms. Hunter asked was about when new people arrived to the city. And I believe that code enforcement, when they see a violation, that they will extend the code book to their citizens. So that is one way of letting them know. But that's only done through violations unless the citizen comes up to City Hall or happens to encounter one of the, citizens that are familiar with that, or a council person that can give them that information. Then they can get the code book from the City Hall, or, like I said, the code enforcement department will issue a code enforcement book to anything that they see in violation. Other than that, we really, I don't think we really have a way of knowing who's new to the city unless it's a neighbor that lives next door and the house was up for sale, and it was sold, and they got new, like at 9108 Glen Arden Parkway, well, I knew that was up for sale. So, I mean, I know you all probably talked to that neighbor and let them know. So, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison?
Just want to say thank you to Ms. Hunter.
Thank you, sir. All right. Are there any other citizens' comments before I adjourn? Anybody online? Who said? I'm sorry. Ms. Hunter, I see, I see the hand. Is that the old hand, correct?
No, I didn't hear my buzzer go off, so I wanted to know if I still had time on my five minutes. But I know that answer's no. So I'll hold it for next time, so y'all are welcome.
Yeah, the timer went off. Sorry.
Oh, I didn't hear. My apologies. Okay.
No worries. All right. With that, the time is 10:50. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.